Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. I advise that Councillor Griffiths will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Collier and seconded by Councillor Cassidy that Councillor Griffiths be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Further apologies?
Thank you, Chair. I advise that Councillor Chong Wah will be on leave of absence today and I move that this absence be accepted.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Massey and seconded by Councillor Collier that Councillor Chong Wah be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,756 meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of February, 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Gidney that the minutes of the 4,756 meeting of the council held on the 11th of February 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. I would now like to call upon Ms Jane Britt, who is going to address the chamber today on tactile ground surface indicators. Please proceed, Ms Britt. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors. I'm Jane Britt. I wear multiple different hats. In my professional life, I'm a disability policy consultant, or otherwise you might like the term nerd. I'm also deaf blind and I'm a constituent of the Morningside Ward. I want to address you today as someone who is deaf blind about the use of tactile ground surface indicators, or tactiles, across Brisbane city. Tactiles are something that are used by people who are blind or vision impaired like myself to keep ourselves safe in the community. They are either horizontal, which helps us with direction in getting around, or they are round, which are hazard tiles which enable us to know whether obstacles are upcoming, like hazards including train tracks and driveways. The problem that has now come about as a result of the public lack of awareness of what tactiles are is that they have been blocked from time to time. People stand on them, particularly in areas like the Queen Street Mall, to hold conversations or use mobile phones. They may otherwise place obstacles across the tactiles, which is incredibly dangerous because as someone with low vision, it means that I'm right on top of the obstacle before I am able to identify it. It may mean at times that my cane collides with it first before I'm able to do anything about it. This causes a risk of injury to myself as well as to other pedestrians. What I'm asking for from the Brisbane City Council is to have a better public awareness through some kind of campaign, through different levels of marketing, to enable the public to understand why they exist. I'd like to thank the council for what it has done to date to enable people in Brisbane to understand why the tactiles exist. However, we really do need to increase that awareness. As I said, the fact that people stand on it and the fact that obstacles are put on the tactiles means that the public is not fully understanding why they are there. In fact, many people are incredibly surprised when I tell them about how I use them and why I use them. The reason that this should matter to all of you in this room is that it's part of Brisbane's inclusion plan, under travel, a city where everyone can move around safely and easily. It's also part of Queensland's disability strategy under inclusive communities. This also should matter as part of your legacy. It's not just about making Brisbane physically accessible, it's about shifting community attitudes about disability. If more people had understanding of what it is to navigate in an environment where, as one of my vision impaired friends once said, every time you step outside your door is like navigating an obstacle course, an unknown obstacle course because you don't know what's out there. And in the long term, as we head towards Brisbane 2032, with the associated legacy 2042, we really have something that is great at our hands to increase the amount of public accessibility across Brisbane, but also the level of community awareness around what they can do to enable our communities to be safer and more inclusive for people like myself. So the final question that I ask to the council is, what can you do to increase public awareness of tactiles, why they're used, but also to increase community awareness of the fact that there are pedestrians who are navigating areas that are not necessarily safe? We've had a rise in e-scooters, we've had a rise in electric vehicles which are mostly silent, and therefore the idea of navigating the world is becoming one that is more and more fraught. So I'd like to conclude this by putting the question back to you. What can you do to help our community? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms Britt. I'd now like to call upon Councillor Howard to respond.
Well, thank you, Chair, and Ms Britt, thank you very much. And may I call you Jane? Is that all right? Thank you. Because Jane, I do want to say a huge thank you for coming in today and for raising this very important issue. And I know that you've participated with us in the past, I think in 2018 when we had our first campaign, and I know that at some stage I participated where I was blindfolded and given a cane and I failed dreadfully, I have to tell you. So I know how incredibly difficult it is and I have on occasion explained to people in the mall what these things are for, you know, and they're very surprised. So you've hit on something that is absolutely 100% what we need to be doing. You know, we tell people, but you just have to keep telling people why these things are there and it's an amazing opportunity for us. And so you'll be very pleased to know that this year's Braille Test Awareness Campaign will be a digital campaign and it's scheduled to run from March through to October, which will consider social media, CityCat screens, the Queen Street Mall screen, council's website, internal promotion to council staff, and we'll also be seeking feedback from Vision Australia and Guide Dogs Queensland, but we'd also welcome your input. So I know that my team will reach out to you. In fact, I'll have a word with you after this to make sure that we can put you in touch with our team so that we can get the maximum benefits out of what we're doing with this campaign because we really know how important it is. And as you said, we're moving to an Olympic city, an Olympic and a Paralympic city, and we know how important it is for our visitors to Brisbane to move around. But I'd also like to just mention to you some of the things that we have achieved because we have recognised the importance of the accessibility through our inclusive Brisbane plan, as you mentioned. The Plan Guides Council's work to ensure that Brisbane is a place where people of all ages, abilities and backgrounds can travel, work, live, enjoy and connect. So it's a very important plan that we work with and we know that in the past it's been very successful for some of the projects that we have worked on. So the Braille Trail running from Reddick Cliff Place down Queen Street Mall and into Anseth Square is a major aid for people with visual impairment and it navigates through the CBD and it's on occasions that I have explained to people what that is for. So we're very much looking forward to making sure that on a regular basis we touch base with Guide Dog Queensland and some of the other areas. And of course, we also know that there are a few more obstacles that are around in the mall now, some scooters that we have there, things such as that, and we are working very closely with those to make sure that they're parked correctly. And of course, with this awareness campaign, we will be sure to make sure that we're letting people know exactly what they're there for and to make sure that we can help for the future. So once again, thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us. We really do appreciate it when people come in to the chamber because I think all of my colleagues who are here really appreciate the effort that that takes for you to come in and so we appreciate that greatly and I look forward to having a chat with you so that we can further the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Howard, and thank you, Ms Britt, for coming in today. Thank you. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, residents know that the Shrima Council is focused on keeping Brisbane moving. Can you update the chamber on recent developments with the council's EBA negotiations and any anticipated public transport impacts?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Councillor Parry for the question. Well, for several months now, council has been working with all of our unions to reach a consensus on our enterprise bargaining agreement which expired in October. That includes the Rail, Tram and Bus Union, or the RTBU, who represent our bus drivers. On Friday, council met with the unions again in the Queensland Industrial Relations Commission and whilst a large number of items are now resolved, there remains dispute over elements of the agreement that relate specifically to pay rises. Council has put on the table a fair and reasonable offer. This offer involves a 3.75% pay increase upon certification and a 3.25% pay increase the following year, which equates to a 7% pay rise over two years for all employees, which includes bus drivers. This offer is well above the rate of inflation and we believe it meets community expectations. Disappointingly, the unions have rejected this offer. On Monday, the RTBU provided council with written notice of work stoppages to occur on Thursday, the 20th of February. Between 4am to 6am on Thursday morning, unionised bus drivers may choose to stop work as part of protected industrial action. The union is inviting drivers to stop work for a one-hour block between 4am to 5am and then again from 5am to 6am to take part in either of the stoppages or both. What this means is at the end of a scheduled run, a bus will end its trip with no passengers on board and return to its depot. That means that the remaining services in that run will not be delivered. It also has the potential to add significant congestion and queuing as buses partaking in industrial action go to and from depots because of replacement buses that we will need to deploy to try to fulfil those services. These two hour long stoppages will, of course, cause significant disruption to our bus network. It will particularly impact essential shift workers such as nurses, midwives who rely on our bus network to get to work in the early hours of the morning, and it has the potential, of course, to cause commuter chaos across our city as commuters are left stranded at their bus stops. As I mentioned, there will be impacts across all of our morning peak services as our driver workforce attempts to catch up with demand. Brisbane commuters will feel the pain of these strikes. I encourage all of our customers to make alternative arrangements, whether it be other public transport modes such as rail, active transport options like cycling and e-scooters or opting to work from home or using private motor vehicles. We know that this isn't always possible, particularly for the city's lowest income workers. These strikes will unfortunately have the biggest impact on them. The RTBU knows this, Madam Chair, but they are proceeding anyway. So why is this happening? Well, we know that the RTBU was seeking a 12% pay rise over two years. This is despite the fact that bus driver pay has increased by over 30% since 2012. Our bus drivers are some of the best paid bus drivers in the country and just don't take my word for it, Madam Chair. The same union, the same union was saying two years ago that there was a pay freeze and of course there was no pay freeze, that was a lie. So they were also saying two years ago that celebrating a 7.4 and an 8% increase over two years.
Councillor Cassidy.
I didn't think you were allowed to say the word lie.
Yeah, I was just about to check that. Councillor Cassidy, were you quoting somebody then or were you using the word lie, Councillor Murphy? Because I'll ask you to change it if you were, please. Thank you.
So either there was a pay freeze or the union was celebrating the enormous pay rises that it got for drivers, but it can't be both, Madam Chair. So what I will say is that-
Point of order.
Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chair. So just to be clear, two weeks in a row now, other councillors have used the word lie or lies and you have not noted their unsuitable meeting conduct in the minutes. Can you advise why you've treated me differently to these councillors?
Councillor, I have had Councillor Murphy withdraw his comment and you know very well that I don't immediately note people in the minutes. I do give you fair warning for your behaviour unless it is incredibly unsuitable meeting conduct. Councillor Murphy.
What I will say, Madam Chair, is that causing commuter chaos on our roads is not furthering the cause of the RTBU or its members and certainly not our drivers. This action does not-
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I note that you did last week offer to withdraw, offer the opportunity to withdraw, but I draw your attention to the fact that that's not how you treated me when you noted me in the minutes. I was not given any opportunity to withdraw. So again, I ask why are councillors being treated differently and why have I been noted in the minutes when other councillors are not being?
Councillor Johnston, I don't uphold your point of order and I ask you not to keep repeating the same point of order when I've already addressed it. Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, this strike action doesn't hurt council and it doesn't hurt the state government. It hurts the commuters of Brisbane that are trying to get to work. It also hurts our bus drivers who will now have to wait longer to get the pay rise that they deserve, a pay rise that is fair, that is reasonable and that is in keeping with community expectations. A pay rise that is above inflation and a pay rise that the city can afford. We will continue to negotiate in good faith with our drivers and their unions on this issue, but we would ask that they seriously consider actions which impact and hurt the commuters of this city because we don't support them.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week you were jet setting internationally while back home in my ward, locals experienced flooding after just 30 mils of rain. I've been told by council officers that much of the drainage in my area is not up to modern standards, but there is no money in the budget to fix or upgrade it because you have not allocated funding in council's budget. I've also heard multiple reports of drains clogged with leaves going months without maintenance and the only way drains are maintained now is after complaints are made because, again, there's not enough staff or funding from you for a proactive approach. So my question is, why do you think spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on overseas travel for LNP politicians is more important than maintaining local drainage networks?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I don't accept the premise of the question because it's not accurate. The reality is that council has invested significantly more in drainage in recent years and in fact, in one of our recent budgets, we doubled the budget for drainage. And despite this reality, we have seen Labour continue to make inaccurate claims about drainage. But also, we've seen Labour continue to give false expectations to the community. The idea that there's magical drainage projects that can solve the flooding problems of Brisbane is not borne out by the reality of the situation. Yes, we invest in drainage, yes, drainage can make a difference, but Brisbane is built on a flood plain. And there are some areas that are at sea level or even below sea level, including areas in Councillor Cassidy's ward, and these areas are actually prone to flooding regardless of any drainage networks because they are simply at the level of the sea. And so to give people the false expectation that you can magically make flooding at sea level disappear is not a responsible thing to do as a local councillor.
Point of order. Point of order, Councillor Cassidy.
I think the Lord Mayor is being incredibly disrespectful to council officers who have provided advice that there are drainage projects that need to be done and will address flooding, but the Lord Mayor simply won't allocate funding to them. He should be relevant to the question.
Councillor Cassidy, that's not a point of order. If you've got more to say on this, you can do it in general business. Lord Mayor.
And as I was saying, Madam Chair, it is irresponsible to give people the expectation that drainage projects will magically make flooding disappear in Brisbane. It is irresponsible.
Point of order, Councillor Cassidy.
The council code of conduct is extremely clear. The Lord Mayor cannot call council officers irresponsible for providing that advice. He must not say these things in here.
Councillor Cassidy-
And in the pickers in the meeting, you have to address it.
You are twisting those words, please.
You have to address it.
Councillor Cassidy, I don't uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
It's also irresponsible to twist the information provided by council officers in good faith to make a political point because that is what we're seeing here. There is only one person misrepresenting the facts and it is Councillor Cassidy. So we'll continue to fund the good projects that will make a difference, just as we have done when we doubled the budget for drainage works in recent years. We will continue to do that and I would invite Councillor Cassidy the opportunity that's been afforded to all councillors to put in his budget submission and it will be considered as will the submissions of all councillors in relation to the preparation of the upcoming budget. Now, Councillor Cassidy loves to play politics with these issues because for him, everything is political. But I think it's actually, it is not responsible to create false expectations when it comes to things like flooding. We know that Brisbane is a city built on a flood plain. We know that many suburbs are at sea level. We know that regardless of what is spent on drainage, there are some areas that will continue to flood. And a significant amount of this flooding that happens in Brisbane is actually overland flow as well, not river flooding only, not creek flooding only, but also overland flow from the natural contours of the ground that has happened for eternity.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, that is inappropriate. Stop calling out. Councillor Cassidy.
Councillor Cassidy called me mate. I asked him to withdraw that. That is not, that is not accurate.
I will absolutely withdraw that.
I feel much better. Madam Chair, I simply would ask Councillor Cassidy to put in his submission and it will be considered.
Further questions? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Civic Cabinet Chair for Transport, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, in the answers to today's questions on notice, the opposition leader's misleading claims about the cost of Brisbane Metro have been exposed for all to see. As he leaves the chamber, Councillor Murphy, you might like to outline just how wrong-
Councillors, thank you. Councillor Cassidy? Councillor Cassidy?
Oh, Councillor Adams, is it okay if I go to the toilet for a break? Is that all right? I don't accept this bullying from Councillor Adams.
It was quite a coincidence that he stood as soon as I said his position. However, as he is now not in the chambers, I will ask again, and his team can tell him, can you outline for us, Councillor Murphy, just how wrong one man can be?
Councillor Murphy.
Well, I can, thank you, Councillor Adams, I can. And I know that Councillor Cassidy has left the chamber, but this will be, I think, for the benefit of his colleagues as well, Madam Chair. So he is so very wrong. We need to start, I think, Madam Chair, with a bit of a history on Labour's cost claims on Brisbane Metro because it's a rich history, actually. It's a rich history. So I could have gone back a long way, but I thought I'll just go back a couple of years just to give you an idea of some of the claims. So the first claim, we'll go back as far as 2023, that is when Councillor Cassidy on social media claimed that Brisbane Metro's cost would exceed $2 billion. Then again, he claimed in 2023 that it would be 36 buses for $2 billion. He then also claimed that in 2022 that the project was $1.7 billion, but in the same meeting also claimed it was $2 billion. And then finally, this year, they've arrived at calling it on social media a project that costs $1.55 billion, which is, guess what? The published budget of Brisbane Metro. So there's been a number of cost claims that Councillor Cassidy has made when it comes to Brisbane Metro and for the benefit of the chamber, I will table just a selection of the cost claims for Brisbane Metro. But this is part of a pattern of behaviour, Madam Chair, of making outlandish and outrageous claims when it comes to the city's signature public transport project. The most recent one was that there was water coming in the roof of Brisbane Metro, that the metro was leaking. Do you want to know what the truth was? It was raining. It was raining on the roof and there was rain on the roof and some people who were wet tracked water into the vehicle. So that's another one. There was another claim that he made, that the aircon wasn't working on a cold day. The thermostat switched off and so the aircon wasn't running. There's cold days even in January, Madam Chair. So that was another one. There was a claim he made, he made a claim, he made a claim, well, check the weather records, Councillor Cassidy, I think you find there was a cold day in January. There was a claim that he made, remember the claim that he made that we'd ordered too many metros? Councillor Adams, do you remember that one? 60 metros? What are you doing with 60 metros? And then do you remember the follow-up claim made the year later that we'd ordered too many metros? Too many. There was not enough metros and then all of a sudden, there was too many metros. It's like the claim he made when we were running the campaign around the buses, where he said, you are blackmailing the state government. This is an outrageous abuse of ratepayers' money. And then when the deal was done, he came in and said, well, I could have got a better deal than that. You know, I thought that was pretty soft serve, Lord Mayor. You could have gone harder. That was another fun one. Then there's the claim of the tunnel collapse, that we covered up a massive tunnel collapse in the Adelaide Street Tunnel. A tunnel collapse? I've never heard of a tunnel collapse. What I did hear about was a void that was fixed very quickly, Madam Chair. There was no tunnel collapse and Councillor Cassidy continues to make that claim that there was some sort of cover up, but he won't, he will find that there is no evidence of that. So what we have, Madam Chair, is deal or no deal, Jared. Deal or no deal, Jared. But every case you open, instead of there being money inside, there's another mistruth. And every case is like that. Numbered 150, when it comes to Metro, there is no truth.
One moment, please, Councillor Murphy. Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chairman, the rules require councillors to refer to each other properly and Councillor Murphy is not doing that with respect to Councillor Cassidy.
Councillor. Councillor Murphy, please refer to councillors by their proper names.
Yes, Madam Chair. Now, Councillor Adams asked a very good question, which was about the question on notice that was asked. Now, in that question on notice, Councillor Cassidy asked for a detailed breakdown of the costs related to the metro project. He has been claiming, let's remember councillors, for many years, that this is $1.52, $1.7 billion for 60 or 36 buses, depending on what he feels at the time. What he got in that question on notice is irrefutable proof and evidence that over 67% of the cost of Brisbane Metro is actually related to hard infrastructure upgrades on the busway. Over $800 million, not 1.5, not 1.4, not 900, not over 2, but over $800 million. Two thirds of the project is related to hard infrastructure and that infrastructure is opening all around the city. You see it on the bus network as you move around, you see it on M2, which is now operating. Brisbane Metro is more than just a bus. It is a game changing project for our city. It is upgrading infrastructure right across the network. It is upgrading infrastructure right across the network, and it will be the most important public transport project to open this year in Brisbane.
Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. The Brisbane Street Art Festival has significantly transformed our city's urban landscape over the past nine years. The festival has not only beautified and revitalized public spaces, but has also fostered community engagement through workshops, artist talks, and collaborative projects. It has supported both emerging and established artists by providing a platform to showcase their work to a broader audience while also educating the public about street art, its history, its cultural significance, helping break down misconceptions about the art form. As the Brisbane Street Art Festival gears up for its 10-year anniversary, it's deeply concerning to learn that Brisbane City Causin has chosen not to support this pivotal event with any funding this year. Given your public commitment to supporting street art, artists, and a vision for Brisbane as a world-class creative city, will you reconsider this decision and reinstate funding for the festival?
Lord Mayor.
No, I won't, because we've actually gone a step further. And we have engaged Brisbane's very first street artist in residence. Not just for a limited-time festival, but on an ongoing basis to provide us direct support and advice and to make sure that we get more street art delivered right across the city. Now, this engagement started off with the opening up of new public street art walls, or legal graffiti walls. And I was proud to be joining with councillor Cunningham at the first one in Greenslopes. And then we opened up a second one as well, down at Tin Galpa. And we want to do so much more when it comes to street art in Brisbane. What our vision is, is to make sure that when people arrive here over the coming years, as Brisbane becomes an increasing tourist destination as we go into the Olympic and Paralympic Games, that they see amazing street art all over the city. And so we want to do more. We want to do more. The Brisbane Street Art Festival has its place, and I have no doubt it will continue. It will continue without our support. But we want to up the ante, which is why we now have a permanent adviser for street art in our city. And I'm very much looking forward to that adviser to roll out and make Brisbane a street art capital in Australia with amazing street art. We have so many talented street artists, and we want to support them, and we want to showcase them.
Further speak. Further questions. Councillor Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Communities and the Arts Committee councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shriner Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better with world-class facilities for residents to enjoy. Can you please update the chamber on the latest project the Shriner Council will deliver to support our community in the western suburbs?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Adam for the question. And I know it's a very exciting project for the residents of the Pullenvale Ward, and especially for the members of the Shed West Men's Shed, the Bridge Club, and the E-Waste Connection. Madam Chair, this project would not have been possible without the former federal member for Ryan Julian Simmons, who worked together with councillor Adam to secure $1.5 million in funding from the Australian Government to deliver this brand-new facility for these very valued community organisations. And today, I'm very pleased to announce that construction is kicking off this month, which will start with the demolition of the central building located between the Men's Shed and the Bridge Club, before getting on with the exciting work of the new build. Madam Chair, the new and improved Kenmore Community Centre will include a brand-new communal meeting place, a card-dealing room for the Bridge Club, an area for the Men's Shed tech hub, and approved amenities, including two ambulance toilets and an accessible toilet. Because, as we know, Madam Chair, accessibility and inclusivity is now embedded in everything that we do and within every part of council. The Kenmore Bridge Club building will have internal walls removed to maximize playing space for club members. We will also be delivering a new kitchen, an ambulance toilet, along with a new covered outdoor seating area for the Bridge Club so that members can enjoy the best of Brisbane's subtropical lifestyle. E-Waste Connection will have additional office and storage space to support the work they do to deliver sustainable outcomes for e-waste while supporting people of all abilities with opportunities to volunteer and learn new skills. E-Waste Connection will also benefit from a new ambulance toilet for their building as well. And we will be installing a new dust extraction system and upgraded kitchen for Shed West Men's Shed. Now, Madam Chair, we all know how important our men's sheds are in improving the health and the wellbeing of members. And they play such an important role in reducing the number of men who are at risk from preventable health issues that emanate from isolation. And I know that they are all looking forward to their new facility, which is due to be completed in June this year, if all goes to plan with the weather. The new and more accessible Kenmore Community Centre will allow even more people to enjoy and take part in these vital community organisations. Now, Madam Chair, through you, I'd like to thank councillor Adam for his tireless efforts in working together with Shed Men's West Shed, the Bridge Club, and E-Waste Connection to achieve a facility which meets the needs of all three organisations. And I'll say here, Madam Chair, that the Lord Mayor and I met with these organisations at the very beginning of this project, and we had a lot of work to do to make sure that we were taking into account all of the requirements of each of the organisations. And I know that councillor Adam's tireless efforts following that meeting have really made a difference and got us to where we are today. And he will also, no doubt, help them thrive and continue to grow their membership into the future. So I'd also like to thank our Connected Communities team and the City Projects Office for their hard work in designing and delivering this brand-new community facility. Chair, this is just one of the many ways the Shriner Council is delivering for our communities, because we, on this side of the chamber, recognize and value our community organisations. Our community organisations are the heart of our suburbs, where residents choose to spend their leisure time, and their community impact is immeasurable. In addition to delivering new and upgraded community facilities like the Kenmore Community Centre, we are delivering programs like the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants, which has provided over 370 community organisations with funding and support to improve facilities and organisational operations. The successive programs like the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants demonstrates just how grateful our community clubs are that the Coalition of Chaos was not elected last year. The Coalition of Chaos has no plans for our community clubs. And through you, Madam Chair, can you guess how many election commitments those opposite had for our community groups and sporting clubs? Well, I will tell you, they made no commitment to help our local clubs or provide them with any additional funding support. And Madam Chair, I suppose that's why we're here. We promise to support our community organisations. The Shriner Council will always prioritize our community clubs. And thankfully, Madam Chair, Brisbane residents saw right through those.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions. Councillor Colly.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Last week, I received an influx of reports from concerned locals who feel neglected by this LNP council when mourning loved ones in the Balmoral Cemetery, surrounded by grass over a metre high. I've also had contact with residents across Brisbane concerned about the lack of maintenance at Tuwong, Lutwich, and Pinnaroo cemeteries. While this was all going on in Brisbane, you travelled to Singapore and Europe, and then, instead of returning to get back to work, you were at a $25,000-a-head dinner for your LNP mate, Peter Dutton. What was on the menu that night?
Lord Mayor.
Look, I wasn't at that function. Thank you.
Further speak. Further questions. Councillor Gibney.
Sorry. My question is for the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, last week, we heard how the Shriner Council is keeping Brisbane moving with the new Kangaroo Point Bridge, which is already proving more popular than ever predicted. Can you please update the chamber on the new addition to the bridge that will help make Brisbane's lifestyle even better?
Councillors. One moment. Councillor Murphy.
Well, I can, councillor Gibney, and given the Lord Mayor didn't attend that function, but he might want to get a top-quality feed, he can now go down to Mulga Bills, which is the new restaurant at the Kangaroo Point Bridge, which has opened at the City Botanic Gardens Landing Side. Of course, Mulga Bills was inspired by the Banjo Patterson poem, "Mulga Bill's Bicycle." The café celebrates cycling, and it also celebrates its function as a critical active transport link to ease congestion and to keep Brisbane moving. Now, this 60-seat café provides casual dining options, so breakfast, lunch, and dinner at the Alice Street Landing. It keeps visitors and passes by well-fed and caffeinated. Now, I had the pleasure of trying their coffee at the opening on Friday, and as a self-confessed coffee snob myself, I can tell you they have a fantastic machine and a wonderful barista staff. Now, the owner, Michael Tassus, was also in attendance on Friday morning at Mulga Bills. And the soon-to-be-open restaurant Stilts will also be owned by Michael Tassus. This, of course, was a fantastic local company that we selected to head up the operations of the new precinct because of their strong track record in Brisbane's hospitality industry and their commitment to sustainability, local ingredients, and local employment. It was a great morning, Madam Chair. There's nothing more exciting than, I think, when our city's infrastructure projects and our city's local businesses can find an opportunity to work hand-in-hand. And that doesn't always happen, Madam Chair. Now, I also ran into a number of passersby who were using the new bridge, who did not hesitate to tell me that they think this bridge is becoming an icon, a Brisbane symbol of our river city. And this is in no small part due to the Shriner Council's commitment to building more of them. Now, residents are very much demonstrating just how much they love these bridges. I've told the chamber since the 15th of December, an average of over 10,000 trips per day over the Kangaroo Point Bridge. And residents have given this bridge an overwhelming endorsement with their feet. Unfortunately, we know there's a number of people in the chamber who don't love our bridges in the same way that the rest of Brisbane does. They particularly don't like when bridges and local businesses collaborate, Madam Chair. In fact, they despise it, and they have been openly hostile to commercialization and activities on and around these iconic landmarks. And I'm of course referring to our friends opposite. Now, we had councillor Griffiths last week, who mocked our, quote, "grand stories of lovely bridge openings," unquote. Like, none of this happened, like it was all a myth. Nobody attended, nobody crossed. But of course, the bridge is real. You can tell it's real because it goes 95 metres high into the sky. We also heard from councillor Strunk, who offered up a range of strange contributions last week. He had an analysis of tunnel building, which deserves a full response on its own. But I wanted to talk about his exceptionally passionate defensive cars. Councillor Strunk warned us that, quote, "Brisbane is a car-based city and has been for over 100 years," unquote. And that will never change. Yeah, I thought that was interesting. What councillor Strunk doesn't realize is that the people closer to the city actually love these active transport options. If they can use them, then they take their car off the road by their own choice. This in turn reduces congestion, and it leaves more space for those in suburbs where they need to drive or catch a bus, suburbs like Forest Lake Ward indeed. And who could forget the illuminating debate we had late last year about allowing people to have an alcoholic drink when they climb the Story Bridge? This is where we got the infamous toast with a Coke quote from councillor Strunk. And not everyone likes Coke, councillor Strunk. Some people like Pepsi Max. But some people also like champagne, and they can sip a champagne at Mulga Bills or Stilts when Stilts opens later this week and when Mulga Bills gets its liquor license from the state government, Madam Chair, which I'm advised is not yet, but should be any day now. So, Madam Chair, let's all have a toast to the iconic, the great Kangaroo Point Bridge, all that it does for our city, and all that it is yet to do. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Further questions. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you've said over the last two years that it's the state government's responsibility to manage homelessness in Brisbane primarily. More recently, you have said you look forward to working with the new premier, David Christopherley, your political ally. So could you please detail what conversations you've had with the premier about Brisbane's homeless crisis and what extra services you've requested from the state government to deal with this crisis?
Lord Mayor.
Well, this question's a bit rich, given that councillor Cassidy obviously now reads the Courier-Meal again. He was very critical of the Courier-Meal in recent years and has said some very disparaging things about the Courier-Meal, but obviously, these days, reads the Courier-Meal. And if he reads the Courier-Meal, he would have seen in the paper today the shocking information about the former Labor government's under-investment in public housing, in social housing, that would generate a shortfall of 30,000 homes. 30,000 homes. And he has the gall to come in and say, for a government that's 100 days in, what have they done to solve the homeless crisis when it is the Labor government that created this crisis?
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Well, Lord Mayor can have these views, and that's fine, but my question was about what he's doing.
Councillor Cassidy.
My question was specifically what conversations the Lord Mayor has had and what he has requested of the premier.
Lord Mayor has five minutes to answer the question. And I do ask you to refrain from calling out while he is doing so. Lord Mayor.
I understand that councillor Cassidy doesn't want to talk about the record of the former Labor government, who has been in power for more than 30 of the past 35 years and has overseen the creation of this housing crisis, specifically the serious and reprehensible under-investment in social housing. We have seen the social housing waiting list grow. We have seen the government, in fact, selling off social homes. Selling off social homes.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. And that is what I'm referring to, councillors. Please stop calling out. Let the Lord Mayor answer the question. Lord Mayor.
We have seen the former state government selling off social homes and struggling to actually have a net gain in social homes. Yet, going into the election, they told people everything was on track to deliver tens of thousands of new social homes, when in fact, we see the reality will be a significant shortfall based on the former government's plan. Now, the reality is, people who are sleeping rough, people who are living in tents in parks or sleeping in cars, need somewhere to go. And in the very first instance, they need crisis accommodation, but ultimately, they need a secure roof over their head. Now, our council has been doing its part in making sure that we approve new house supply. And that's why we have supported the creation of 57,000 new homes through development approvals while I have been the Lord Mayor. And most of those homes have been opposed by Labor and the Greens. Now, we are not responsible for the provision of government housing, although we do invest in government housing through our joint ownership of the Brisbane Housing Company. Brisbane Housing Company has delivered more than 2,000 homes and has plans to deliver thousands more homes. And we have recently been looking at ways that we can support them with extra funding or land where appropriate, as we've seen through this chamber. But ultimately, homes need to be built, and they need to be built by the state government.
Point of order.
And we have an expectation.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor.
On relevance, we're getting very close, but the Lord Mayor still won't answer the question, which was specifically what conversations he has had and what extra services he has requested of the state government.
Councillor Cassidy, I do not uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
I have confidence that the Christopherley government will actually implement real plans to deliver more social housing. Now, I know that during the short time that they were in office previously, they geared up a plan to build a significant amount of social housing in the Logan area, which was then shot down by the Labor government. It was shot down by the Labor government. And so...
Point of order, Chair.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor Cassidy.
My question was specifically about what conversations the Lord Mayor has had with the premier and what extra services he has requested for Brisbane.
Logan had nothing to do, or the previous LMP government, had nothing to do with my question. I just asked you to draw him back to the specifics of the question.
Lord Mayor is answering the question. Lord Mayor.
If I've had conversations with the Premier, I certainly won't be telling you about them, councillor Cassidy, because my focus is about getting things done for our city, not about, not about revealing private conversations I may or may not have had with the Premier.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillors, just because you don't like the answer doesn't mean you can keep calling out and calling points of order. Lord Mayor. Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Marks?
Yes, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, last week, there was much discussion of the so-called bushland acquisition levy by those opposite. I was not aware that there was such a thing as a bushland acquisition levy. I thought perhaps they were talking about the bushland preservation levy or perhaps a new labor tax. Can you please explain to the chamber what the bushland preservation levy actually is?
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'd like to thank councillor Marks for the question. And, Madam Chair, as councillor Marks reminds us, there is no bushland acquisition levy. Indeed, it is the bushland preservation levy. And we've had that since 1991. Now, I know councillor Griffiths isn't here today, but you never know, he might be watching from home. But he does like to come into the chamber and he does like to make up stuff and provide information to this chamber that is not entirely accurate. So what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is for the benefit of the chamber, is to once again outline what the bushland preservation levy is all about. As the name suggests, the levy exists for the preservation of our bushland and it supports a number of programmes. It supports the Community Conservation Partnerships and Community Conservation Alliance. And this funding, Madam Chair, provides assistance for Habitat Brisbane, our creek catchment groups and the Wildlife Conservation Partnerships Programme. And all three of these programmes aim to increase community involvement in preserving and improving our city's natural assets and waterway health. There are almost 9,000 volunteers and partners across Brisbane that participate in those programmes that work to deliver bushland and waterway improvements. And there are also, for noting, over 1,000 sites that cover over 3,500 hectares. Another programme under the bushland preservation levy is the Conservation Reserves Management Programme, which is a rolling programme to restore, rehabilitate and upgrade infrastructure in and around council-owned or managed natural assets. And this programme helps with the fire preparedness and management. It secures natural areas from illegal access, preventing degradation from vehicles, dumping and the like. It helps with the rehabilitation of bushland and it provides safe access and facilities for community enjoyment. Let's take Carrawatha Forest, for example. Much of the land was saved from urban development and this site now is an area that we do see koalas, we do see greater gliders and native frogs. And this is now also accessible through public access and we know that people really do appreciate that space in Brisbane. Then, of course, there's the Wipe Out Weeds and Brisbane Invasive Species Management Plan, which delivers weed and invasive species management and restoration projects in line with our biosecurity plan. Of course, there's the Oxy Creek Transformation Project. And anyone would think that councillor Griffiths one week will come in and support that project and the next week does not. It is our 20-year commitment to transforming the Oxy Creek Corridor from the Brisbane River to Laurel Pinta into a green lifestyle and leisure destination. There is 150 hectares at Archfield Wetlands, which are now accessible through the shared walking and cycling trail. And of course, there is the bushland acquisition programme, which acquires new parcels of land to be rehabilitated and preserved for future generations of the city to enjoy. So from Lord Mayor Sally Ann Atkinson's initial purchase of a 12 hectare site at 495 Sir Samuel Griffith Drive at Mount Cotha back in 1990, through accelerated programmes under both Lord Mayor Newman and Quirk, we have now secured more than 4,400 hectares of bushland that will be preserved for years to come. And Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna is a great supporter of the continuation of this programme. So the amount of land that we have secured today, Madam Chair, is the equivalent of almost 600 Suncorp stadiums. But don't forget that this is a voluntary programme. Yes, councillor Toomey, it is an incredible figure, an incredible figure, and one that we should be very, very proud of, and I know that you are. But as I was saying, this is a voluntary process. We don't, we don't acquire land by force. Instead, we wait for landowners to volunteer their properties for the programme and we are constantly in negotiations for new parcels. Madam Chair, this is a very important part of what we offer our city. The levy provides all of those things that I've spoken about today. We know that Brisbane is the most biodiverse capital city and we want to continue with that mantle. We will continue to invest through the preservation levy, all of those things that I've spoken of, and I look forward to coming back and speaking of more properties in the future.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired and that now ends question time. Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 10th of February 2025.
Madam Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 10th of February 2025, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 10th of February 2025, be adopted.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. Could I ask that all these items be taken seriously, Adam, for debate and vote, please?
Lord Mayor, item A.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
I move the suspension of standing, oh, sorry, I move that the motion currently lying on the table, increased pathways out of homelessness grant, moved on the 14th of May 2024, be taken off the table for debate.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the motion from the 14th of May 2024 be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The nos have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier, ayes to my right and nos to my left. Please ring the bell. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the nos have it, the voting being five in favour and 18 against.
The motion is lost. Please resume your seats. Lord Mayor, clause A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to start by offering my condolences and the condolences, no doubt of all councillors, on the passing of former Lady Mayoress Pearl Ruby Harvey, who was Roy Harvey's partner and wife. And Pearl Ruby Harvey was born on the 29th of August 1921. She grew up in Aspli, at a time when it was predominantly still an agricultural area. At the age of 16, Pearl commenced work as a stenographer and she was working at a tannery in Kedron and she met Roy Harvey there. They went on to marry at St Paul's Lutheran Church in Nunda in December 1949. The very next year, Pearl was active in the community, volunteering and on the campaign trail to support her husband, Roy. Roy would spend a total of 26 years, or 27 years as an alderman in the council, including three years as the Lord Mayor of Brisbane. This was long before councillors or aldermen had an office or any support, so it was just councillor on their own. And in this situation, Pearl stepped up as a volunteer to provide administrative support to Roy. Roy didn't need to offer Pearl to volunteer because she was an active community worker and she kindly offered to assist with schools, clubs, local community organisations where she volunteered in positions such as secretary or treasurer. As an alderman's wife, Pearl supported representation at many local Queensland events, including extending to intergovernmental delegations and later the Edmonton Commonwealth Games, the 1982 Commonwealth Games, and even five royal visits as well. After 27 years in council, Roy and Pearl retired to Caloundra, where Pearl remained an active participant in her local community, even after Roy's passing in 2006. According to the words of Lutheran tradition, Pearl was called home on Tuesday, the 11th of February, at the age of 104. On behalf of Brisbane City Council and the people of Brisbane, I wish to pass on our sincere condolences to the Harvey family and all of those who knew Roy and Pearl, and to thank her specifically for her role in creating a better Brisbane and particularly her role as Lady Mayoress as well. Last week, I understand the Deputy Mayor again raised our concerns about rising anti-Semitism in Australia, including locally. And this is of great concern to me as well personally, as I know it is and should be to all councillors. Today, there's been another incidence of racist and anti-Semitic graffiti down in South Brisbane. We have arranged for this graffiti to be quickly removed, but it is graffiti that included swastikas and also racist comments as well. This is not the type of city that we want to live in. This is not something we should tolerate as a city. We are a tolerant city and should be a tolerant city, but we should not tolerate this kind of hate. And so I just want to again state that we live in a place that should be respectful of all people and certainly not peddling hate or fanning the flames of hatred in our community. And so we'll continue to work with the authorities and I will also reiterate the very serious call that has been made now at least twice by the head of AZO, the, obviously, the Australian Security Intelligence Organisation, that's responsible for managing threats within our community, where they have asked for politicians and community leaders to avoid public commentary which inflames tensions and contributes to the destabilisation of our social cohesion. You know, those comments aren't made by people like that very often, but when they are made, we should listen because they know things that we don't and they see threats that we don't necessarily see. They have information that we don't necessarily have and we should take those claims and that, that request very seriously. Last week, I was absent from council because I was on a delegation with the mayors of South East Queensland. I joined the mayors of Noosa, Sunshine Coast, Morton Bay, Ipswich, Logan, Scenic Rim, Redlands, Toowoomba, Somerset and also the Deputy Mayor of Lockyer to visit three locations. We visited Singapore first. Singapore was a flight stopover location and we took the opportunity to visit that amazing city and to have a couple of days of meetings there. Our first visit in Singapore was regarding a very basic municipal service and that was waste management. Singapore obviously has a limited amount of land. It is an island nation and they have a real challenge with land. They don't have the abundance of land that we have and so things that maybe we take for granted, they can't take for granted. At the moment, their landfill is actually on an island and it's been a man-made island, I understand, and that's not a sustainable outcome because that landfill is filling up. They're effectively creating an island of waste off the coast of Singapore. And so they've invested heavily in waste-to-energy facilities to deal with their waste stream and a city of 6 million people creates a significant waste stream. It's a large city, it is a bustling city, it's a successful city. And so we visited the waste-to-energy facility at Tours and it's operated by Keppel Seeger's. It is a state-of-the-art waste-to-energy facility. It's capable of holding, of dealing with 800 tonnes of solid municipal waste each day. It operates 24 hours a day. It's located at least a kilometre from the nearest residents and uses all of the state-of-the-art technology that you would expect. We discussed the different technologies available for waste-to-energy plants. We also discussed how these plants are funded and owned. And this particular one was funded as part of a public-private partnership where there was partial government ownership and partial private investment in the facility. And it was fascinating and interesting to see how they operate their waste management stream in such a high-density but constrained city with limited landfill options. And so the waste-to-energy technology was very much an eye-opener and a learning experience for the mayors. We know that as we go forward, waste-to-energy is an option that we need to consider as a region. And obviously with the state government's landfill diversion targets, obviously technologies like waste-to-energy become more and more viable over time. And so it was important that we, as a region, had the opportunity to visit that facility. We then visited the Sabana Jerong Campus. Sabana Jerong is a large publicly-owned company in Singapore that delivers infrastructure. It also owns a number of local Australian businesses, including the Robert Byrd Group, which was a business that was established in Brisbane, and a company called SMEC. You may have heard of SMEC, but it stands for the Snowy Mountains Engineering Company. It is the company that built the Snowy River Scheme, the original one, and it's now owned by the Singapore group Sabana Jerong, but obviously has offices here and continues to do great work across Australia. The SJ Group has more than 16,000 staff across the world, including a number of local staff here in Queensland. They specialise in built environment and they've also been involved in so many infrastructure projects, including not only building roads, bridges and various other infrastructure, but homes as well to meet the needs of Singapore. The interesting discussion was had about the model of housing ownership in Singapore, where more than 80% of people live in public housing. But it is a different model of public housing than we have here. And in fact, Singaporean residents have the opportunity to purchase their home. So yes, it is public housing, but effectively over time, they pay off that house and they eventually get ownership of that house. But no house or apartment can be owned for longer than 99 years. Everything is on a 99-year lease. And so, yes, you can own your own home, but you can't necessarily transfer it into your family if you pass away. And there's quite a complex model... family if you pass away, and there's quite a complex model of ownership. But in Singapore, there is no visible homelessness.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension?
It has been moved for an extension by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. In Singapore, there's no visible homelessness, and people that need access to a government or social home get access to a government and social home. And so they have certainly, I think, done what many countries have aspired to do, and I think that's because of the leadership of the original founder of Singapore, Lee Kwan Yu, who had an aspiration that everyone would have access to a home. They have a different model in Singapore. Some people would argue that it wouldn't necessarily work here in Australia, but it's certainly a real-life example of a nation that was able to eliminate homelessness. And so that was a very interesting discussion indeed. Singapore, I mentioned, has a shortage of land, but it also has a shortage of natural resources, and it has a shortage of water. And we visited the Marina Barrage site, which is right next to the gardens by the bay and Marina Bay Sands and that precinct there. And what they have created is a dam with a series of walls that can open up and close, and they effectively, they want to use every single drop of natural water that lands on the island. And so they have created a series of reservoirs and dams. They treat that water, they recycle that water. It's called new water, which is fully recycled water, and that is used by the island as well in various ways. But this particular dam was an engineering feat, a 350-metre wall across the channel, which, as I said, has opening walls. But they have previously relied on Malaysia for a vast majority of their water supply. So the water supply gets pumped from Malaysia. Singapore has needed to be more self-sustainable when it comes to their own water needs, and so they're using water, they're recycling water, and it's quite common and accepted there that that's a thing to do. So we visited the Centre for Liveable Cities, and we're hosted by Mr Hugh Lim, the executive director. The Urban Redevelopment Authority building was the host to the Centre for Liveable Cities. And this is very much an organisation that has had a long-term plan for the development of Singapore and has helped transform the nation over the last 50 years. When you go into this building, you can see that they have a model of the whole of Singapore. So, you know, it's like one of those architectural models where someone has gone to great detail to build little buildings, well, they've got the whole of Singapore in a room on a model, and they use this to illustrate what the long-term plan is for Singapore. And so they have tours coming through constantly, they make sure their population is engaged in how Singapore will change and grow. And one of the things that is remarkable is that they set a plan 50 years ago, and they stuck to that plan. Who would have thought? Something that, I guess, we all aspire to in Western countries, but we have governments change and plans change, and they set a plan 50 years ago, and they are rolling out that plan, and that plan has worked. They have gone from being a developing country to one of the world's most advanced nations, and a nation where everyone has a home, and there are good incomes, good job opportunities, and it is a globally connected city. At this visit, we signed an agreement to join the Lee Kwan Yu World City Prize Network. We were invited to join this network, as we have been in the past awarded as a Lee Kwan Yu Prize City, and there was an opportunity to officially ratify that agreement for us to become part of the Lee Kwan Yu World Prize City Network. Other cities in the network include New York, Seoul, Korea, and Vienna in Austria. The prize recognises the most vibrant, livable and sustainable cities in the world and encourages sharing of ideas and exchange of information and knowledge and learnings. We visited the National Computer Systems Group, NCS, which is a subsidiary company of Optus or Singtel. Optus, as you know, Optus, the Australian telecommunications company, is owned by Singtel, which is the Singapore telecommunications company. This was an opportunity to see some of the latest cutting-edge technology when it comes to systems that are available to deliver smart cities, and whether that's making smart travel choices, dealing with traffic volumes, parking availability, there's a whole range of smart technology being employed in Singapore by companies like NCS that was fascinating to see. And in fact, one of the sort of moments that I'll never forget is that they've developed a programme for cities to manage their fleet of robots. So, you know, robots for cleaning the street, robots for doing various things, they have security robots to patrol areas, and they've got a software system that manages all of the city's robots. One thing we did discuss with them is that in Australia, security robots have been beaten up by the public, and that was quite surprising to the Singaporeans. I don't think they liked that, but the reaction of some Aussies to robots patrolling the street has not been a good one. It's like a dystopian future that, you know, some people don't want to live in, but in Singapore, they have robots patrolling the airport, robots patrolling train stations, and they are effectively security robots that feed back, live feed to the police and authorities. We had a visit to Singapore's most important tourist attraction, which is the gardens by the bay, probably the world's most amazing botanical gardens, an absolutely amazing creation, which has millions of tourists. I think it was something like 14 million tourists a year visit the gardens by the bay. And there was, there's a glasshouse installation, some of you have been to it, and it was great to see, there's a whole area designated for Australian plants in there. And so you've got the kangaroo paw growing, you've got the bottle trees, the grass trees, absolutely amazing. And so just how you can create that, and it was actually reclaimed land that it was created on, and then turn it into a major tourist attraction, has been absolutely inspirational. Singapore was always known as a stopover city, where people would catch a flight there and then they're going somewhere else. They've deliberately created attractions so that people will stay a night or two nights, and that has massively boosted their economy. And so there's an opportunity for us to learn from that as well. We then moved on to Greater Manchester. Now, I'd certainly never been to Manchester before. I had heard about Manchester mainly as a result of its football teams, but I was actually very interested to learn the rich industrial history of Manchester. And so the Industrial Revolution started in Manchester. The very first factories in the world were in Manchester, and so that's where the Industrial Revolution kicked off. And so that was a very different era, and now we're in the post-industrial era. Virtually all of those factories have closed, and large parts of the city were derelict for many, many years. Jobs were lost, there was economic devastation. As we know, over time, factories have moved to other places, industries have closed down, and that's what happened in Manchester. And so the story of Manchester and the learnings from Manchester was how a post-industrial city can recover from the devastation caused by the loss of industries. And they have done an incredible job, they have really done an incredible job. The way that they have transformed areas in their city and revitalised them, previously derelict areas, and created new thriving communities, new thriving industries, has been inspirational. What else was inspirational was the arrangement that they had negotiated with their national government. Now, in the UK, they don't have the same system of government as we do, they have two levels of government, but they have regional councils as well as local councils. So you could argue there's three levels of government, but there's two levels of councils. And so the national government, through a city deal, has progressively devolved power to local councils. Wouldn't that be a wonderful thing if it came with funding sources as well?
If only.
Because that's what they did in Manchester. They devolved responsibility and power to local councils, but they gave them funding sources to match. Here, they devolve responsibilities, never power, just responsibilities, but there's no funding ever to match. So the Manchester City deal was a groundbreaking deal, and they have really used that to gear up their levels of service, to create new funding sources to service their community. That also relieves pressure on the national government as well, because the local government can be self-sustaining, and they have ability to collect their own revenue sources. Manchester has done many things when it comes to improving transport, but like London, they have an obsession with double-decker buses.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair?
Seconded. It's been moved by the deputy mayor for an extension and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. They have an obsession with double-decker buses, and they've created, they've just, the local councils have just taken over the Transport Authority. Previously, the Transport Authority was operated through a range of private concessions, and the councils decided to take it back on and run it themselves. And they have created a range of new services and improved public transport offerings as a result of that. So they had to pay out the private concessions. So the council paid out the private operators, took back the buses and operated themselves, which is an interesting model, but that was something that they were able to do with their own funding source. Obviously, a challenge here because our transport contribution is funded through general rates. We don't have a funding source, we don't collect the fair revenue, but they're doing some great things with transport there as well. We visited the, what was known as Sports City. And Sports City was a precinct which was previously derelict factories, and they've created some amazing facilities there for sports and entertainment. They have created a huge entertainment centre which can host concerts and sporting events, it's an indoor facility. They have got a huge stadium there, the Etihad Stadium, which is home of the Manchester City team, and they've also got a range of training facilities and other sports facilities in the precinct. So they've used the derelict area, or previously derelict area, to create a thriving sports hub, which they refer to as Sports City. They've also connected that in with great public transport as well, which makes a lot of sense and was a great, was a great outcome. We also visited Media City, which is based on a similar principle, taking a previously derelict area, and the headquarters of the BBC moved in to that location, and a whole heap of other media companies moved in, universities moved in, it's become a thriving hub and a source of jobs in an area that was previously devoid of them. So there was a lot of learnings from Manchester. We also talked to Manchester about their waste management. They also operate waste-to-energy facilities, and they have an incredible diversion from landfill of close to 100%. So they're virtually not sending anything to landfill at all. They've got multiple waste-to-energy facilities, they've got great recycling facilities, and there was a lot to learn from them as well. We then moved on to Paris, and our first visit was to the Adidas Arena. The Adidas Arena was an 8,000-seat facility in the northern suburbs of Paris, which are economically challenged areas of the city, seen as areas that could use investment, that needed investment. And one of the deliberate decisions of the city of Paris and the surrounding councils was to make sure that investment for the Olympic Games would go into areas that needed a lift, and those northern suburbs of Paris around Saint-Denis benefited from investment of new facilities such as the Adidas Arena. And so this facility opened just one month before the Olympics, that's called cutting it fine, if you ask me, but it's been used ever since in a much greater way than anticipated. We then had meetings in the city hall in Paris. We had a lot of interesting meetings, and we met with the housing deputy mayor. Actually, there's 34 deputy mayors in Paris, councillor Cunningham. And so effectively, every committee chair is a deputy mayor. So if you're, they've got 34 committees. And the person that I was talking to, that we were meeting with, had very similar housing policies to the Greens political party. And I was like, this sounds very familiar. He was a member of the Communist Party, and they have Communist Party councillors there. And I'm like, this is, like, this is the same policies, basically. They support our vacancy tax, they have a range of Greens-like policies for housing. So it was, it was like being in a parallel universe, so.
Here's to the fifth republic.
So, yeah. But, look, we know that recently in the Courier-Meoy, Jonathan Sri was claiming he's not a communist, but they have the same policies as the communists, so it's quite interesting. We had a range of meetings with various deputy mayors, and they were really useful. Simple things from what they had to do when it comes to city cleanliness and the management of street cleaning and rubbish collection during the Games, an extraordinary effort to transport, we talked about transport and mass transit and mobility and how that operated during the Games. We talked about housing. We also, we met with the deputy mayor, that was the second time I've met him, Pierre Rabadon, who I previously met as well, and we had another great chat about the learnings from the Olympic Games and Paralympic Games. We visited a number of the other councils in the Greater Paris region, including Saint-Denis, which is in the northern suburbs that I mentioned, including the main stadium, the Start de France, an 80,000-seat stadium which was built for the 1998 FIFA World Cup, and that is an example of using legacy infrastructure, but it was good legacy infrastructure. It was an 80,000-seat stadium, it wasn't CUSAC, it wasn't CUSAC, it was a good facility. And so we also had some discussions. Paris Airport, or Charles de Gaulle Airport, is investing heavily in advanced air mobility, otherwise known as air taxis, and they were telling us about their experience with trying to get an air taxi service operational. We visited the swimming complex, which is built right next to Start de France, and it was a purpose-built swimming complex, which will be a legacy swimming complex for the community. We visited the nautical stadium, which was for the canoeing, kayaking and the rowing, and that was something that in Brisbane will be hosted by Redlands. And we also were hosted by the Australian ambassador in France, where she was kind enough to invite a lot of French businesses who wanted to do business in Queensland to create some connections and some opportunities. And some of those French businesses were involved heavily in the Olympics. We had a great chat with one such business who received the contract to organise the opening ceremony of the Olympic Games along the Seine. And so we had a great chat about the complexities of organising an event like had never been held before, no opening ceremony has ever been held outside a stadium like that, the security challenges, but then also some of the practical challenges of not knowing who was performing in the opening ceremony. So some of the performers that we now know, they were not ever told who they were, and so they had to plan an event without knowing who was performing, quite incredible. They have offered their services to Brisbane, but I'm sure we'll go through a procurement process for that. So there was a lot of great learnings. And finally, I forgot to mention, we met with the president of the Greater Paris region, Valerie Progres, and she is responsible, through the Greater Paris region, for the entire public transport network in Paris. We also met with one of her vice presidents, Alexandra de Blanche, who was, she's responsible for economic development in the region. And following our visit, she posted on social media about that visit, and she was talking about welcoming our delegation, but she said in her post- And she was talking about welcoming our delegation, but she said in her post, "The Olympics created lasting economic benefits for France and the region. It created 137,000 jobs, including 10,000 indirect jobs." And that was also from foreign investments linked to the Games, so investment that would not have otherwise happened without the Games. That the Paris region attracted 130 foreign investment projects, including 4,000 direct jobs. And she said here, and this sounds very familiar, "Hosting the Olympics is not just about two weeks of competition. It's about decades of transformation." And she offered her support and advice to Brisbane as well. So there was a lot that we learnt. It wasn't just about the Olympics. It was about a whole heap of municipal issues. And I guess the important thing was that we're able to build stronger and closer relationships with the mayors of South East Queensland too. At the recent election last year, more than half of the mayors changed over. And so it was an opportunity to build strong relationships because Comsec's motto is "One region, one voice", and together as mayors, we are stronger.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair?
Seconded.
Moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon for an extension. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Together as mayors, we are stronger because in these areas that we've visited, one thing was common. Whether it's Paris or Manchester, whether it in the past has been other locations, when local governments get together, they collaborate, they advocate, they lobby together, they can achieve amazing things. And that was the story in Manchester. That was the story in Paris during the Olympics. And so local governments working together is sadly quite a rare thing in Australia. There is no other organisation like Comsec in Australia and there's certainly no other organisation that has the sheer scale of councils. Five out of the top 10 largest councils in Australia are in South East Queensland. Comsec is one of a kind and it is a really good thing. And you know, the, the mayors have a wide range of different views. Some mayors, you could call them conservative. Some mayors, you can call them genuinely independent, not one way or the other. Some mayors are associated with the Labour Party, but we all built some closer bonds and we all developed a desire to work together to see our region prosper from the opportunity that we have ahead. And moving on to the items on the agenda in front of us, look, I apologise. I know that was a long report, but it's important that I share that. Item A is the update to the organisational services policies, including council's guarantee policy and the COVID-19 response policy. Council's guarantee policy outlines the use of guarantees to compensate council for credit risk in cases where a party fails to fulfil contractual obligations. Effective implementation of this policy ensures a consistent and structured approach to managing guarantees for councils. Following a recent review of the guarantee policy, an amendment has been proposed to update the reference in the policy supporting information from Brisbane City Council's accounting practices to guarantee procedure. Reference has been updated directly to directly refer to the applicable procedure instead of the overarching practice. You can tell that was written for me because it's, yeah, it is a bit of a mouthful. The COVID-19 response policy, obviously it's been five years now since we first had to respond to the pandemic. Council followed health service, health advice from Queensland Health, while also providing our cities' community groups and local businesses with support during a difficult time. Our approach was, was to ensure timely and appropriate response to the various challenges of COVID-19 were presented. As an employer, council's COVID-19 response policy was developed. It provided a mechanism to quickly consult on and implement and finalise procedures and control measures in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And these controls, obviously at the time, had a significant effect on the way we all work. Often, organisations take a long time to change the way they work. We all had to change overnight and obviously this policy reflects that. Item B is the contracts and tendering report for January 2024. Seven out of eight contracts were awarded to local suppliers, being 87% of contracts.
Thank you. Yep, they're all Sereatum, so just item A. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on this item before us today. And just with your indulgence, we would like to thank the Lord Mayor for his words on the passing of Pearl Ruby Harvey. I wasn't aware, but a great council eulogy for the life and times of, of the Lady Meress. And from all accounts, led an incredible life herself on top of the work that she obviously did as Lady Meress in supporting the work of Roy Harvey through some important times in Brisbane. And we certainly add our condolences to the words that the Lord Mayor said in here today and thank the Lord Mayor for doing that. I was very pleased to get the report from the Lord Mayor just now and his travel, trip overseas, quite comprehensive. It's good to get that and good to get that in a timely fashion, of course. Not a lot of other Olympic councils don't give them as fulsomely as that. Lord Mayor was amazed there was no homelessness in Singapore, but we've heard earlier today he had no view on it here in Brisbane, apparently. Discovered that the Industrial Revolution began in the UK. Probably missed that one in school, I suspect. Recycling so good in Manchester, they have almost zero waste, but refuses to do anything about it here in Brisbane. And went to Paris to talk about housing with communists. I'm sure his jaw hit the ground when he realised what meeting he was in then, but an interesting one, I'm sure nonetheless. But on the talks of housing and homelessness as a result of having an Olympic Games in your city, the Lord Mayor certainly didn't talk about the enormous displacement of rough sleepers, of people on the margins of society and people under housing stress in Paris. That has now in some cases become permanent as a result of the Olympic Games. So I certainly hope the Lord Mayor learned some lessons from that and has some plans, not just to address it directly, but also to advocate at higher levels of government about changes to how an Olympics is delivered in terms of a housing response that we will need to make here in Brisbane. Clause A, the update to organisational services policies. We all support this item today because it seems like a pretty reasonable, straightforward move. The guarantee policy looks at how council receives compensation for credit risk if contractual obligations are not meant. And that's very important, of course, to have that in place. And the COVID policy was implemented as a response to the pandemic, which significantly affected workers here in council, with so many of them being on the frontline and delivering services. So it obviously makes sense that we no longer require that document, that the pandemic is largely over, even though COVID is not. I'm sure plenty of us have had or know people that continue to, continue to, to contract COVID and the impacts that that have, has on the workforce is still evolving without requirements for isolation and leave. Managing illness at work goes back to those days of, of potentially having people who are infectious and contagious attending work as well. But that's, that is very much a business-as-usual problem for an organisation like council that needs to address on a day-to-day basis. Within that policy around COVID arrangements, so there was greater flexibility offered to work from home and that was certainly, I think, a positive outcome in terms of council's workforce finally being able to demonstrate that flexible work arrangements where, you know, they meet the needs of the worker, the employee and where they're able to still deliver the service that they are required to, that those arrangements can work. For years and years in the lead-up to COVID, we were continually told that those flexible work arrangements, work from home and starting the job from home rather than attending depots and things like that couldn't be accommodated because that's, we would see a loss of productivity. But what in fact we saw over that period of time and that flexible work arrangements was that productivity actually increased. There was less sick leave taken for a variety of reasons. And productivity actually increased and, and people's time spent at home with their families and travel time and all that sort of stuff was better for workers as well. So, and that has sort of stuck, I guess, in council with, we've seen last year, I think, the contracts for office space. So you'll see a massive reduction in the office space required across Green Square and Brisbane Square as well. I go up to Brisbane Square from time to time to look at files. Sorry to the Information Services team, if you're listening along. I know we ask a lot and I go up and inspect a lot of files up there. But you walk through there and it is a bit of a ghost town these days. I know it's being prepared for, prepared for refurbishment and some, some parts there that, you know, certainly needs it. The working arrangements for a lot of staff there are substandard. But there, you do get a sense that there's sort of less buzz and less hype in a lot of those floors up there, a lot of less collaboration, I guess. And when you, you look at the statistics, that there's close to 400 less staff now working in council, 400 less permanent staff now than there were just a couple of years ago. You sort of, you get a sense of that when you go into workplaces. And the ones that are left, of course, are being asked to, to do more work with less resources than ever before. Doing, doing more in their day to, to cover the shortfall of a colleague that no longer works in council or might be on leave and is not being backfilled. And we know that even where council staff are making a fair and reasonable request for a wage increase, that the LNP are fighting them tooth and nail every step of the way. And, you know, it's quite incredible when you listen to the rhetoric from councillor Murphy earlier about the bus driver wage offer, which also applies to other council staff working across divisions and across offices and out in the field there. To know that those staff for the last couple of years, and this has been at an increasing rate, are being asked to, in some cases, do the work of two people, but the LNP are denying them a fair wage increase. We're not just talking about keeping in line with an official number that's released in terms of inflation at a national level or even at a Queensland level. We're talking about recognising the hard work of hard-working council staff when they are seeking fair remuneration. And if they have for the last two years been doing two people's jobs because their, as their colleagues exit the organisation, they're not being replaced. We think a fair and reasonable wage offer like the one that council staff are putting to council should be supported. So those platitudes, those platitudes we hear on one hand from the LNP, that they say they're worker-friendly and they're flexible, mean absolutely nothing when their actions speak the opposite and much more loudly. And I, I put this to the LNP today, that even when those platitudes are uttered, they're pretty hollow because we heard councillor Murphy literally say today that the wage offer for council employees is, according to him, fair, reasonable and in keeping with community expectations, despite the fact that councillor Murphy received a pay rise that was higher and backdated than the one he is offering council bus drivers. Shame on him.
Further speakers. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak just briefly on item A. So firstly, to the guarantee policy. This sets out clear guidelines regarding the use of guarantees to manage credit risk for council in situations where one party does not meet its contractual obligations. By implementing this policy effectively, council ensures a structured, consistent and transparent approach to managing guarantees, reducing our council's financial risk while maintaining accountability for the residents of Brisbane. Recent review of the policy identified the need for an update to the policy supporting information and as a result, an amendment has been proposed to change a reference from FMA 700, Brisbane City Council Accounting Practices, to FMA 500 Guarantee Procedure. The revision is intended to enhance clarity by ensuring the policy directly refers to the specific procedure governing guarantees rather than the overarching accounting practice. Now on to COVID, the removal of the COVID response policy. So, Madam Chair, it's now been five years, as we all know, since council had to first respond to the pandemic. Over this time, we've witnessed significant changes in how this public health challenge has been managed. Throughout that time, council remain committed to following the health advice and directives, importantly, that were issued by Queensland Health. At the same time, we recognise the need to support our cities' local businesses, community organisations and residents in navigating the life-changing disruptions and uncertainties of that period of time. Our approach was centred on ensuring a timely, flexible and appropriate response to the various challenges presented by the pandemic. We adapted quickly to evolving circumstances, ensuring that necessary measures were in place to protect the health and wellbeing of our workforce and the community. As an employer, council introduced the COVID-19 response policy as a key mechanism for responding to the pandemic. This policy at the time helped to manage the phase of the pandemic where we were dealing with transmission in the community, meaning that council staff were testing positive to the virus or were close contacts with someone at home. The policy enabled council to quickly consult on, implement and finalise procedures and controls to mitigate the risks associated with the changing and evolving circumstances. At present, there are no longer any special arrangements for managing COVID. It's now addressed in the same way as other communicable diseases under the council's organisational zero-harm management system. And I'm pleased to have support from both sides of the chamber for these policies and I commend them.
Further speakers. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I'll rise briefly to speak to item A specifically around the COVID response policy. I think it's important to remember that while the immediate crisis might be over, there are threats of new variants and potential outbreaks and this remains a concern. One of course, one of the biggest concerns is vulnerable populations, including elderly, those with underlying health conditions, immunocompromised individuals. They continue to be at greater risk, not only in our broader community, but also within our staff. As a local council, we must continue to prioritise the protection and support of these most vulnerable, noting that there are still COVID-19 deaths and hospitalisations and inclusions into ICU. Of course, outside of a formal policy, it's important with council staff that are particularly vulnerable to remain as risk-free as possible because transmission is still occurring. You know, stuff that we can do and support, and I know that this council already does, that I am incredibly supportive of, include risk assessments, evaluating the risk faced by vulnerable staff, adjusting their work roles and schedules as needed. Of course, less possible with less staff, but I do support it. I also support, of course, the work that Brisbane City Council is doing in health and wellbeing programmes and hope for their expansion. Employee assistant programmes, EAPs, for mental health support, as well as wellness initiatives in fitness and stress reduction do help staff resilience and manage mental health. We must continue flexible workplace arrangements. Working remotely or hybrid models are incredibly important and these adjustments minimise exposure for vulnerable staff and reduce the stress associated returning to the office and with potential of getting sick because, again, the most vulnerable in our communities and in our staff are immunocompromised. And of course, communication channels, which I know can be a challenge in Brisbane City Council. What we want is open, transparent communication with vulnerable staff that will allow Brisbane City Council to address their concerns, check in regularly and ensure their needs are reassessed as circumstances change. By maintaining this dialogue, we can ensure that no one feels unsupported. I want to reiterate that the health and wellbeing of our vulnerable staff members should remain a top priority. And as a council, we should be committed to providing the necessary support to make these adjustments. And if I can, just very quickly to speak to something the Lord Mayor said earlier before. I'm sure the Lord Mayor knows that Paris already has a vacancy levy. 70%, 70% in the first year and 34% in the second.
Just to the report, thanks, Councillor Massey. Any further speakers? Councillor Struck.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on one of the, one of the measures in clause A and that is the removal of the COVID-19 policy. I mean, we, we lived through COVID-19 and we had, we had to adjust our lives quite a lot, actually. And, and measures had to be put into place at all levels of government and businesses as well, of course, to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. And certainly council had to do their, their part and Colin Jensen, the CEO at the time, undertook that, that amount of work with, with others on his team to put, to put measures in place to, to deal with it. Now, a lot of those measures, of course, came from the state government health. the senior health officer Janet Young and the Premier and the Health Minister at the time. And it was done in a pretty quick manner, actually. I was just thinking, when I saw this coming to council, coming in clause A, that I just sort of, it just took me back a little bit to all the sacrifices that we had to make as a collective society to help minimise Covid-19 until they found a vaccine that was available. But we did a lot of stuff because of this policy that I'm just hoping that we're not going to forget some of that that we learnt, right? Something as simple as hand sanitizers, hand sanitizers, sorry. And we still employ that in the office, in the ward office as well, as well as in the toilet facilities as well. And I don't know if that happens right across council, but I hope we don't lose that measure that was put into place pretty quickly. In the cleaning of the offices as well, of course, has been lessened since Covid became less of a crisis. It's still going, people are still dying, of course, but not anywhere near the numbers and the infection rate is not probably as high. But I just wanted to mention a couple of things that one of my, a couple of my team mentioned to me, and that is that the office cleaning, we used to have it daily, actually, and in handles and all sorts of things to try to treat those surfaces, right? Like candles and desktops and things like that to try to minimise the infection. And that was sort of taken away towards the end of the Covid crisis. And, but also the cleaning of my office actually went from five days a week to two, which I think is probably a little bit, probably needs to be increased again. Because the office staff have taken a lot of that on board.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Lord Mayor. We'll now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. We'll now move to item B, Contracts and Tendering, Report of Contracts Accepted by Delegates of Council for January 2025. Lord Mayor.
Seven out of eight contracts were awarded to local suppliers, being eighty-seven percent of the contracts. So far this financial year, sixty-eight contracts have been awarded to local suppliers, being ninety-four percent of all contracts. And a total spend so far this financial year of seven hundred and forty-eight million with local contractors. Contracts this particular month, which is January, include upgrades to facilities at Keith Payne Park in Stafford, management of Art Force Brisbane, as you know, which is the wonderful programme which sees artwork delivered on traffic signal controller boxes. Is also community street tree planting. There's also the demolition of houses that have been acquired under the Bushland Acquisition Programme. There's updates to our green waste processing services panel and a booking, ticketing and online payment solution for council's community halls and planetarium. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on clause B, Contracts and Tendering, which is the report from January 2025. A range of contracts here for January, a bit better than we've been getting used to over the last few months. It's getting better. There was just one for the month of December and two for the month of November. There's a couple here, but there are some ones worth talking about, I think. When you look at contract one, or contract one which has two packages of work in there, we see that's for the Bushland Acquisition Programme, something very topical. We've been talking about that in here for the last couple of weeks. And as we know, this fund was established in nineteen ninety by Sally Ann Atkinson. So council could buy land to protect Brisbane's unique bushland. Buy land to protect Brisbane's unique bushland.
I'll remind you that it's just about the contract and that is for the demolition of the two houses.
So, thanks very much, Chair. The administration, that administration, as we heard from councillor Davis today, purchased just one property. And then over the subsequent thirteen, fourteen years of the Labor administration, purchased thousands and thousands of hectares, including the greatest real estate deal in Brisbane's history, purchasing 500 hectares of the Booner Wetlands for $1.
Again, Councillor Cassidy, I'll bring you back to the actual report.
Thanks very much, Chair. So the package for us today is for the demolition of homes using Bushland money. Now, we understand that these are on properties that were purchased using the Bushland Acquisition Fund. And at the twentieth anniversary of that fund, Sally Ann Atkinson said herself that that programme is all about, and I quote, "buying up the land that was going to be developed quickly", buying it quickly to preserve that bushland. Now, it's obviously become alarmingly obvious over the last few years, and particularly with today's contracts before us today, that this fund is being used to do a lot more than just buy bushland. It's being used for general maintenance today, the demolition of buildings as we see here before us. And what's funding this work before us today is a levy that's put on to every rates notice that's sent out to every rate payer in Brisbane of three point five percent. So I wonder how people really feel knowing that that levy, that three point five percent levy on their rates is being used for other things, like paying almost half a million dollars to a demolition company to demolish houses rather than purchasing more bushland. I certainly don't think that's in the spirit of the programme, as is, you know, paying for general maintenance, paying for fuel for cars to be driving around, paying for photocopying costs and the such. So we don't believe that's in the spirit of the programme and certainly not in the spirit of the programme which Sally Ann Atkinson established when we listened to her own words, that it was about purchasing bushland, not about demolishing houses. We know rate pays fork out around $20 million a year for the Bushland Acquisition Programme and they should be able to trust that their money is being used for its intended purpose. On contract five, Chair, which is for the Asia-Pacific City Summit, what we see before us today is a contract for a summit conference organiser. The summit, of course, is something we support, the summit. It's a great Labor legacy, of course, set up in nineteen ninety-six by Lord Mayor Jim Sawley. And it's meant to be Brisbane City Council's signature biennial international event. Comes, there's no surprise, of course, that the L N P found a way to contract it out over the years. The L N P is spending, Chair, almost half a million dollars on a contractor to plan this event, despite having extremely capable staff in council's own international relations and multicultural affairs unit and across the CEO's office, across the Lord Mayor's office presumably, who put a lot of time and effort into planning events and large events the council hosts. This in-house unit was set up to coordinate business missions and to enable development opportunities and foster long-term partnerships between local and international organisations. The International Relations and Multicultural Affairs Unit sounds like the perfect fit for a unit within council to organise a city summit, doesn't it? You'd think so. So you've got to ask yourself the question, why is the L N P spending almost half a million dollars on someone else to plan it? None of those, what are they called them? Sensible savings? They call it sensible savings when they ditch staff. They don't call it sensible savings, of course, when they contract out. So it's becoming harder and harder to believe this Lord Mayor, when he cries poor, that council can't afford to deliver services out in the suburbs of Brisbane like drainage, but can afford to spend half a million dollars on a contract of which council should be able to manage in-house. Should if they hadn't have gutted council's workforce. This is, of course, the same Lord Mayor that slapped a new tax on pensioners just to receive their paper rates notices and now contributing to throwing a lavish event in Dubai. I'm sure he'll no doubt be one of the guest speakers, another overseas travel bill coming our way, I'm sure. So that one's a little disappointing and you sort of, you start to build a picture when you read through these documents about the L N P's, you know, long tenure in council. They say it's a good thing. I think the people of Brisbane, when they realise that all of these problems that are plaguing us now all sheet at home to the decisions that a twenty-one-year-old political administration have been making and losing touch fundamentally with the priorities that ordinary working people in Brisbane have. And before us today, you see that, you see even on programmes that the L N P say they are proud to have established, like the Bushland Acquisition Programme, that they are entirely bastardising that programme now and using funds that were intended to purchase bushland to now demolish houses. A city summit which had a very, Asia-Pacific City Summit, which had a very clear agenda about putting Brisbane on the world stage and utilising council's amazing resources to do so is now being contracted out because, under the L N P, that's not in their interest to deliver those services as a council for the rates that they levy each and every rate payer of Brisbane. So while there's a little bit more in this month's contracts document, a few extras in there, still a fail from this tired old L N P regime.
Point of order, Chair?
Point of order, Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourn for a period of fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Any further debate? Councillor Harton.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak in support of item A, the report of contracts accepted by delegates of council for January 2025. Specifically, I would like to highlight the panel refresh for green waste processing services. This is about expanding our panel of providers to ensure that we can continue to deliver a reliable and efficient green waste service for all of our residents. This panel is an important step to ensuring Brisbane remains a leader in effective waste management. And we can continue to deliver this reliable and efficient green waste processing services, as I said, for all residents. As Australia's fastest-growing capital city, Brisbane faces ongoing challenges of waste management and we need to be thinking forward into 2042 about how we continue to divert waste from landfill. We're committed to delivering a solution that reduces landfill and supports responsible waste management. And as part of that, we are making green waste recycling more accessible. Mr Chair, I can confirm that our locals love our bargain. Brisbane residents have wholeheartedly embraced the slashing of cost for this service to less than a dollar a week. It has, councillor Toomey, I love your enthusiasm. And can I just add, the Gap Ward is actually our number one green bin ward. So your enthusiasm is appreciated and it's great to see that your residents too love our green waste services. Now, can I just say that this makes it the most affordable service in the country? And as a result of the cost delivery measures that our surrender council has taken, it is a fantastic solution that we hope even more residents embrace. Now, since we have cut the cost of green bins, we have now seen 165,000 green bins in circulation across Brisbane, which has diverted a significant amount of waste from landfill. But with this success comes the need to plan ahead. This panel refresh builds on the strong foundations we've already established. With the current arrangement beginning in 2018, there were only three suppliers that could provide 80,000 tonnes of waste annually. Processing, apologies. Today, with the support of this contract, we'll now see 110,000 tonnes of waste being able to be processed. This is a fantastic initiative and we want to see more and more waste diverted from landfill. So with more residents taking up this affordable service, we need to ensure the capacity for the future. Now, onboarding these additional suppliers will ensure that we have this capability and the capacity to manage this safely and responsibly. I commend this contract to the chamber.
Any further debate? Councillor Strong.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on clause B, a couple of the contracts. Contract one, and there's been some good talk, good discussion in regards to this Bushland Acquisition Programme. And this money, of course, was to remove those buildings that are still in situ after the acquisition. Now, I'd love to actually have the Bushland Acquisition Fund actually purchase something in my ward, but since I've been councillor, we haven't had anything in my ward. The closest we got, the closest we got was, which I think some of this money is going to is going to cover off on getting rid of this particular building. This old house was at 362 Waterford Road, which is in the Jamboree Ward, which used to actually be in the Forest Lake Ward back before the last redistribution. But anyways, we identified actually that particular building or maybe even the platform of the building, you know, the foundations as a possibility for a men's shed, actually. And I raised that with the meeting I had with councillor Vicky Howard at a meeting about my local men's shed. Now, that's, it was part of a Bushland acquisition, right? About two and a half million dollars or thereabouts, that's not the exact figure, but about two and a half million dollars that we spent. And there was an old house on board with that particular block, which is on the corner of Waterford Road. Well, it's actually just on the corner block, actually, which has great visibility, right? So I could see why council purchased the acquisition or that bushland. It works well with the other green space around that particular part of the Jamboree Ward. And so I just thought I would mention that, that I think it still is a good site for maybe a men's shed or something else for that matter. Anyways, contract two, briefly, the Keith Payne Park Toilet Block in councillor Wines' ward of Inaugury. I had a look, I had a look once I saw it, because I had a couple of old toilet blocks myself and that were funded through that Covid infrastructure package that we were given back during Covid. And I replaced a couple of old ones. So I was really interested just to see how old this one was. And yeah, it definitely needs to be replaced, definitely. And I'm sure councillor Wines is very happy to have that funded. Sorry, this is a margin. We looked it up and it said Inaugury. So anyways, sorry for that. I'll take the correction if I do, you, Deputy Chair. Take that interjection. But anyways, the interesting part was the park that it's in, actually, the toilet blocks, it's a very elongated park. And the toilet block, current toilet block is at one end and around about 110 metres is the actual playground, right? Where the small kids, of course, play in a nice playground area. And I would just suggest that maybe the council for margin, maybe consider putting the toilet block, when it gets replaced, at the other end. There's plenty of services at either end. And it's just that I think the small kids probably need the amenity a little bit quicker than maybe the ones at the basketball court where it's next to. Anyways, I'll just make those few remarks in regards to the Contracts and Tendering. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Any further debate? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on Contracts and Tendering and in particular contract number five and just to set councillor Cassidy straight because yet again, he's got it so completely wrong. The Asia-Pacific City Summit is the premier city summit. I mentioned his name and he walked out again. Coincidence? Me thinks not. The Asia-Pacific City Summit is well and truly, oh, sorry, Mr Deputy Chair. Perhaps he just needs to wee every time I stand up to speak. The Asia-Pacific City Summit is the premier city summit in the southern hemisphere. It has been recognised by many as being better and more connected than the Singapore City Summit, which has been long lauded as the premier summit across the southern hemisphere. And this year it is going to absolutely next levels by being in world. And this year, it is going to absolutely next levels by being in world expo city in Dubai. So I have to say that the one thing I will agree with councillor Cassidy is that the officers that we've got in our international relations and multicultural affairs team are absolutely outstanding. They do so much to make sure we foster those strong community networks across the city. We have strong relationships with our sister cities and they are doing a wonderful job underneath the manager Nicole Andronicus, who also oversees the Olympic City, to make sure that global positioning and international relationships is now at next level, whether it's in trade or investment, business connections. And that is their specialty, trade, business connections, communities, connecting. What their specialty is not, and what we don't expect them to be spending their time is in conference organising. And it is next level and it has always been much bigger than anything our civic events team do with regards to civic events. If you've ever been to a business convention meeting, you know that conventions and conferences are very, very different beasts. And for many years, we have used the expertise and outstanding experience and delivery by Carillion Conference Management. So they have actually supported us in the Asia-Pacific City Summit in 2013, 2015, 2017, 2019, 2021 and 2023. And now are going to be our conference providers for 2025. So we are growing and it's no short means because of the support we've had from Carillion and the fantastic work that Ashley and the team do as well. You need to realise, particularly when we have offshore Asia-Pacific City Summits, that there is a lot of work offshore. We are the secretariat, we need to be there early, we need to make sure it's organised. We have the Brisbane Pavilion, you have the speakers list, you have the keynotes, all of that is organised by the conference managers. Our team work non-stop here, nearly 12 hours a day, particularly as we get closer, making sure that the invites go out to over 500 mayors around the world. And last time, we saw a record of more than 100 mayors join us here in Brisbane, more than 1,400 delegates, that they encourage, they connect, they keep calling, they kept emailing, they make sure the e-newsletters go out. They never let one connection drop. And of course, the sponsors and the supporters from the Brisbane businesses. So not only do they support us, but they can also leverage the APCS to make the economy in Brisbane stronger because they get that global positioning and leverage as well. The team does an outstanding job, but they couldn't do it without a professional conference manager. And that's what we've got here, the best value for money and the best experience to deliver the premier city summit. And I look forward to Dubai in October, which I know a lot of councillors are very excited about going. And we're looking forward to a fantastic outcome later in the year.
Any further debate? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I'll add to the debate on contract five in the contracts and tendering report and specifically add to the comments that councillor Adams has made. Our relationship with Carillon Conference Management has gone on for a very, very long time. APCS has a 30-year history, kicked off in 1996, and it is an incredibly valuable forum, not only for the city, but also delegates from across the world who attend that event. And as councillor Adams indicated, this event is owned by Brisbane City Council under the stewardship of our international relations and multicultural affairs team. They do a terrific job managing the portfolio of responsibilities they've got. But clearly, you know, oversight of major events like this is a specialised capability. We've got great capability in organising events, but events of this scale are a complex exercise and accordingly, we work with an external provider. Now, the event in Dubai is at Expo City Dubai, councillor Adams mentioned that, and the theme is collaborate, innovate and transform. Our partner in this, Carillon, they've been involved in something like 600 events across the globe since they were established. So they are a group that has great expertise in this regard. They have a deep familiarity and longstanding relationship with this event and with council and accordingly, they add a great degree of value. Now, you know, looking at the ways in which they help us, other than just organising the event, they also help us with corporate sponsorship, delegate fees and a range of other revenue raising activities. And over time and over different events, the amount that they assist with respect to revenue raising will outstrip the costs we pay in terms of contracting them. So it, over time, a very, very important relationship. As I mentioned, APCS is a key gateway for Brisbane businesses to reach global audiences, potential global clients and vice versa. And so from our perspective, this is a terrific event to not only support Brisbane business, but to showcase our city. Thank you.
Any further debate?
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. And I just want to speak on item two, if that's okay, very briefly. I just want to respond to a couple of the comments that councillor Strong made, and I appreciate him taking an interest in the toilets at Keith Payne VC Park. It is an excellent project and it certainly is needed. Those toilets are quite old. And in terms of the location, what I would say is they're actually located close to the memorials. So that's where a lot of people gather on service days and that sort of thing to obviously honour Keith Payne, who was a VC recipient for the Vietnam War, for his service in the Vietnam War. One other thing I'd like to mention is, last year, I was contacted by a resident called Sarah, who asked for an improvement, an upgrade to that playground there. And knowing that these toilets were going to be upgraded and knowing there was a need in the community for a better playground, I hosted a park planning party in October last year, where we had lots and lots of feedback from local families. It is a heavily used park, not just the playground, but also the large amount of green space that's there. It doesn't look too big from the Google image photos, I get that, but it is quite a good-sized park. And we got lots of feedback and I'm very excited to say that we will be delivering a new playground this year, hopefully, all going well, to those local families that are located around that park. So they will get this brand-new toilet block, which will better serve them. They will also get a new playground, which is very exciting, which I'll be using my suburban enhancement fund to fund. And on top of that as well, I'm working with the RSL Kedron Wavell Services Club to see if we can give that memorial a bit of an upgrade so that what Keith Payne did to serve our country during the Vietnam War is honoured rightfully so. So thank you very much.
Any further debate? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. And I rise to speak on item B, contracts and tendering, in particular with regard to the bushland acquisition packages, one and two. Deputy Chair, as you would be aware, when we acquire property through the bushland acquisition programme, to make safe those parcels of land, we remove infrastructure that is on the site. And that can include a dwelling, it could be things like sheds or carports or garages. And we do that for a couple of reasons. We do it firstly to make safe, but second of all, we don't want people graffitiing the infrastructure. We want to make sure that we clear the property so that restoration works can go ahead. The properties before us today that were acquired are across the city. We've got two properties in Rachel Street at Maruka, which is about a hectare of land, 478 Grief Road at Roche Tail, which is about 1.9 hectares. At Wakehold, we've acquired 1.8 hectares at 262 Waterford Road. And in my ward of McDowell, there's 0.9 of a hectare along Old Northern Road. The site at McDowell, negotiations had been going on for several years with the property owners. And it was when they decided to retire and move from a larger parcel of land to a smaller property that they reached out to council and said, we're ready to sell and we were able to acquire that land. I should also mention, I'm sorry, that 68 Lake Manchester Road in Colo, councillor Adamin, we acquired 4.5 hectares of land. It was interesting to hear some of the comments by councillor Cassidy. I thought it was councillor Griffiths that liked to come into this place and sort of modify the facts, but it appears that councillor Cassidy is probably his mentor, the way that he had in fact presented his argument today. And it wasn't much of an argument because, as I mentioned this morning during question time, we have a bushland preservation levy, we do not have a bushland acquisition levy. And councillor Cassidy probably needs to listen carefully about what the bushland preservation levy is about, for which the acquisition programme is part of. And it's all very clearly stated in the fees and charges in our budget each year. The other interesting comment that councillor Cassidy made was regards to photocopying, money being used for photocopying out of bushland acquisition fund. Now, it could be urban myth, but I am reliably told that in fact, it was former councillor Helen Abrahams, who was the last Labor Chair of my committee, who was a great proponent of using bushland acquisition fund for printing and photocopying. So I just wonder whether councillor Cassidy in fact got the wrong administration. Councillor Strong spoke about the bushland acquisition fund and how he might like to see more bushland purchased in his area. Councillor Strong, we are always talking to property owners where we feel that there is appropriate land that is environmentally sensitive and would be eligible under the bushland acquisition programme. But if you have any properties that you would like to put forward, the very friendly people in that area in my portfolio would be very happy to have a look. But just because you put it forward, it does have to meet some criteria and we would happily have a look at that. Deputy Chair, I am a, I love what we do with the bushland preservation levy, I love what we do with the bushland acquisition programme. The bushland, looking after our bushland is very important. It's not just about acquiring, it's also about maintaining. And I would support the proposal that we have in front of us.
Any further debate? If there's no further debate now, put clause B to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Collier and councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Please, yep, read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and five abstentions.
The clause is carried. Councillors, please return to your seats. Deputy Mayor, clause C.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. Item C is the tailored amendment to the Brisbane City Plan 2014, the Mount Gravat Suburban Renewal Precinct. This is now our third suburban renewal precinct plan we have commenced under the fast-track process introduced by the former state government. Brisbane has grown faster than any other capital city over the past decade, with more than 400,000 people expected to move to the city by 2046. Suburban renewal precincts are a key part of our plan to create more housing opportunities by converting underutilised commercial and industrial areas into mixed-use precincts with attached homes. Located approximately eight kilometres south-east of the CBD, the Mount Gravat Centre Suburban Renewal Precinct Plan will target properties either side of Logan Road from Pickthorn Street to Broadwater Road, including properties close to Mount Gravat Plaza. The Mount Gravat precinct area is surrounded by major employment hubs such as Westfield Mount Gravat, Mount Gravat Plaza and the Homemaker Centre, as well as high-frequency bus services along Logan Road. There are currently around 1,500 properties within the precinct area, including homes and businesses, with close to 40% of the suburb's residents renting. Other non-residential uses include large-form retail, mainly car showrooms, hotels, medical facilities, schools, kindergartens and places of worship. Mount Gravat Central is also well-connected with high-frequency bus services along Logan Road, giving residents the option of easy access to Brisbane city centre. By undertaking a precinct plan, we hope to revitalise the precinct as a vibrant mixed-use destination with distinctive centres that complement rather than compete, as well as unlock opportunities for additional employment, education and services. Council will work with stakeholders to create a vision for the area that will revitalise the precinct with higher-density housing, high-density housing and a mix of cafes, restaurants, retail and services, while also maximising the existing high-frequency public transport and open space. I commend it.
Any further debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item C, the amendments to Brisbane City Plan 2014 for the Mount Gravat Centre Suburban Renewal Precinct. Just going to get the item, that's before us today, which is the map before us. So we, as we have for quite some time on this side of the chamber, support suburban renewal. In fact, were the creators of suburban renewal through the 1990s. So we do know and accept that action needs to be taken to address the city's crippling housing shortage. For years, we've seen this has been getting worse and this LNP council has had a go, slow approach to making changes. That's just not, they're not my words, they are the words of LNP councils, including the planning chair, who talks about a methodical, a slow approach. In some cases, it'll take up to 10 years to see housing delivered from changes that the LNP are making. So we need to remember as well, in all of this context as well, that councillor Shrinna and his LNP regime have been in power for the last two decades, last two decades. So they have had their hands firmly on the levers of power and planning here in Brisbane for almost a generation. Back when the LNP gained power in 2004, with the election of Campbell Newman as mayor, Brisbane had a median house price of about $310,000. In 2010, it was about $460,000. This is when, at that point, the Chamber of Commerce and Industry Queensland raised the alarm, among many others, that the likelihood of home ownership for first home buyers was becoming more remote. The house median in Brisbane now is around $1 million and the unit median is around $700,000. And according to the LNP, their approach is working. According to the LNP, they have done nothing wrong over the last 21 years. And they think Brisbane continues to get better. I wonder if many people feel better off when they're looking for a rental or looking for a home to buy in Brisbane at the moment? I would have taken councillor Givney's interjection, she didn't do it loud enough. So the LNP have absolutely no one to blame but themselves for the, no, I tried, tried, couldn't get it, for the lack of long-term housing planning and output of the city plan and planning decisions that have been made. The suburban renewal precinct plan that was first announced back in 2022, the process of suburban renewal precinct planning was announced back in 2022. And there was a list produced of targets for suburban renewal, which were all over the city, including Yarongra and Winham and Runcorn, Alderley, few in Maruka, Stones Corner, Norman Park, Kedron, Nathan, Nunda, Dutton Park, Wilston and Wishart. And there's also a map produced, releasing Akiris for increased housing supply, which was an area in Chirmside, on Hamilton Road, not far from Westfield, a large area around Wellington Street and Lutwich Road, in Lutwich, in Winham, Carrendale, Upper Mount Gravat was listed, which was the Westfield Mount Gravat site. Upper Mount Gravatt was listed, which was the Westfield Mount Gravatt site, used to be known as Garden City, of course, and the Indrapilly Shopping Centre site. So since then, since those areas were clearly articulated, what year is it? 2025. It's hard, sometimes when you're signing the date, you forget it's 2025. But we're well into 2025. So three years ago, in 2022, the LMP put on the table their comprehensive, so-called comprehensive plan to address housing shortages here in Brisbane. And so since then, in 2022, we've seen Kirilpa progress, Stones Corner, and the early stages down at Winham, which is a very contained site. And we have this single page before us today. So, as I said at the outset, it's good to see some plans moving forward. Obviously, we had reservations around the process at Kirilpa, but we have, of course, supported plans at Stones Corner and Winham to progress, to deliver a housing outcome for people. But there really is no urgency from the LMP about this whatsoever. They do really just tick boxes as they go when it comes to planning and when it comes to a response to a housing crisis. So we, as I said, we've supported those plans, but we bemoan the snail's pace. This is all taking and continue to be alarmed at this LMP regime's attitude that their housing plan will take up to 10 years to see some housing built. These are the marquee sites. These are the sites in which the fastest action that they're willing to take is occurring. According to councillor Allen, there will be a 10-year delay in seeing some of that housing built. In fact, we're still waiting for anything to be built in the Kirilpa precinct area, TLPI area, two years on from the announcement down there. And I guess it's no surprise, though, when you sort of follow this along, that the Shrinna regime is more focused on announcements and PR spin than the actual outcomes, really. They love the announcement, they don't mind really what happens next because they've just come up with a new announcement and then continue to roll on, announcement after announcement, no follow-through and no delivery. So what we have before us today is a very, you know, the next little piece in terms of suburban renewal and a response to the housing crisis in the solving that puzzle, which is very, very minimal detail. There are some words in the INSEI report which are not the planning scheme change that we're debating. The planning scheme change we're debating is a map. When I pointed out to councillor Allen in the city planning committee this morning that he had released more information to the media than he had provided to councillors on the planning committee about what's being planned here today, let alone other councillors that aren't on that committee that are in council here today making that decision, he offered the following insight to me. There is no plan, apparently. There is no plan. This is the plan. We've been given a rough map outline, rough map outline, some lines on the map, which looks to tell us that the suburban renewal precinct is around a high-frequency bus route on Logan Road. We can discern that, of course. It's near the Mount Gravatt Outlook Reserve and Glendorman Park in the southern part of that map area. It currently has mixed-use planning, but there's no further detail on what people can expect from the process. Now, as I've said before, as we increase density in these areas, we must make sure that there is infrastructure on hand to meet that growing demand for services. It makes sense to have new housing placed around existing public transport routes and green spaces, but we do note that the location that is proposed here today is very different from the location that the LMP released some years ago now as the final plan, which was upper Mount Gravatt around the Mount Gravatt Shopping Centre, of course. So we are interested to know how these exact locations are determined and who determines them and which precinct will be next. Now, what we have come to learn, come to learn from media reporting after the Stones Corner process was complete here in council is that that was landowner and developer-led over there, not council-led, because Mark Stockwell, as reported in the media, said that he approached council alongside other landowners, also Stockwell's a development company as well, about redeveloping that area in Stones Corner. So came to council with a vision, with an idea about what they wanted, and so council started that process. We know that Kirilpa, of course, was developer-led because councillor Adams said that it was the property council that approached her about that, and that's why that process kicked off and started.
Point of order, Mister Deputy Chair.
Yep, point of order.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Councillor Adams hasn't spoken about this, so she can't claim misrepresentation, unfortunately, Chair.
Councillor Adams has spoke today, so she's allowed to have that.
Not about that. You can't claim misrepresentation. I'm talking about something, you should, you should check that because we are denied that all the time.
Point of order. Happy to withdraw because I will be speaking.
Yeah, she, it's, yeah.
Sure, I'm happy to go on.
It's during the course of the current meeting, so she has spoke during the course of the current meeting.
Not about, not about the Kirilpa TLPI.
I made my ruling.
Well, she's withdrawn anyways, it doesn't matter. The Mount Gravatt site, that's, I don't know, God knows. The Mount Gravatt site for us today, the lines on the map there, was not an area proposed to be looked at in terms of increasing housing supply.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I move for an extension.
Second.
Councillor Collier, seconded by councillor Strunk. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those who can say no? The noes have it. Further speakers on clause C, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair. Well.
Sorry, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Allen has the floor. Yes, that was what's on the floor, so. But now councillor Allen has the floor.
Chair, point of order.
Point of order.
I call for a division.
It's too late.
Yeah, second.
He's already part, he's too late. Yeah, sorry. Well, councillor Allen's having the floor now. Councillor Allen. Councillor Cassidy. Councillor Cassidy, councillor Allen has the floor. Look, look, the chamber voted. The, the chamber has voted on the, on the motion. There was, it's, it's too late for, for the division. So councillor Allen, you have the floor. Councillor Cassidy. Councillor Cassidy, there's been, there's been a vote and one side voted no. It's been voted, it's been voted on. Councillor Cassidy, councillor Cassidy, there's been a decision made by this chamber and then councillor Allen's having the floor now. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair. I did want to sort of go into a little bit more detail on this particular suburban renewal precinct, but councillor Cunningham did a very good job of explaining it upfront. And I did want to just take an opportunity, I think, just to highlight the inaccuracies and inconsistencies in councillor Cassidy's contribution. It was really quite extraordinary. So the submission we have before us today is to start or seek approval from the state government to start a section 18 process. It's nothing more than that. Once we get the approval from the state, we will go through the process of engaging the owners, engaging the community in order to work up a draft plan. So this is just the starting point. And one thing I would say is, and councillor Cassidy made much about the pace with which things are happening with respect to some of our suburban renewal precincts. We spent a fair bit of time working with the state government to agree the section 18 process and framework, so that certainly took some time. But this, the section 18 process, was something that was pursued by this administration and it's something that will give rise to much more rapid planning outcomes than our previous neighbourhood planning process. So this is our administration working with the state to bring about a planning process that will indeed be very, very rapid. The sort of notion that the discussions or the suburban renewal precincts were announced in 2022 is correct, but a fair bit of that time was spent organising the framework and the process. Now, we aren't slow in responding to the housing challenge in Brisbane. As I mentioned last week, in 2024, we approved 11,900 new homes in this city, well in advance of the target set by the South East Queensland Regional Plan of about 8,900. We have nine years' worth of supply of housing in the Brisbane City Plan, so the latent capacity is there. We're continuing to approve more developments in this city. The problem is getting these projects out of the ground. Now, council does not control the construction industry, but it's worth bearing in mind that the previous state government did much to ail the construction industry in this city with their support of the CFMEU. We are in a diabolical state and the levers that have made things worse were the ones pulled by the previous Labor government. So we're doing everything we can to continue to provide housing in this city. He made much of the fact that we've got a TLPI in place in Kirilpa. There are DA's coming in there right now. So we know that there will be housing provided in that area, but like anything, it takes time to get approval through the system and then for the feasibilities to stack up in order to bring about a viable development. So this sort of notion that council isn't doing everything they can to bring about housing, it's absolutely incorrect. And unless councillor Cassidy wants us to enter the construction industry, we cannot do any more than what we're doing at the moment. Now, one thing that I did want to pick him up on, and he's been making this mistake for a better part of two years, since we announced the housing supply action plan, he keeps referencing a map that was in there, and I've got a large A3 version here. These are not the suburban renewal precincts that we're talking about. In the top left-hand corner, it says, existing higher-density areas will be used to increase housing supply, and he gets this wrong time and time again. So I will table the map for councillor Cassidy's benefit. So suburban renewal precincts will continue to be identified across the city on criteria that we believe are appropriate. Some of those criteria include things such as high-frequency public transport, where there's an opportunity to leverage underutilised residential or commercial or industrial land, where we have existing amenity, where we have an opportunity to get some landowners to work together. One of the things that we do need is cooperative landowners who want to work on a better precinct in their area, and that's what we've got in Mount Gravatt. It's what we had in Stones Corner, it's what we have in Winham, and we are continuing to identify opportunities across the city for suburban renewal.
Councillor Allen, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mister Deputy Mayor. I stand to speak on item C before us, the Mount Gravatt Suburban Renewal Precinct. I'm very excited to welcome planning into my ward again. This will be the third planning instrument I've had over the last 17 years, and it is basically the missing gap in between the Mount Gravatt Corridor Neighbourhood Plan and the Cooperoo Districts and Holland Park Neighbourhood Plan. So along Logan Road, between the Mount Gravatt Showgrounds and the Homemaker Centre and Glendorman Park. It is a very much a commercialised area. It is also high-frequency buses along this route, particularly in peak hours. It is also desperately in need of renewal. It is commonly called the terminus from any of those that used to be on a tram, and there's still plenty of them around, pre-1969, just a little bit before my time. But Mount Gravatt Central was the thriving hub in the 70s and the 80s of the Mount Gravatt area until Garden City established itself and became very much the larger principal regional activity centre. But it still has some beautiful things about it with the Mount Gravatt Plaza that is down there, some very bespoke restaurants and cafes that have come into the central. But we are also lagging behind in what we need in open space, what we need in housing. And there are some very big opportunities along this corridor with so many car yards, which I do feel with the greatest respect to ZUPs, who have also been there for about 60 or 70 years, are going the way of the dinosaurs. They are very much at the moment car servicing facilities, not really sales yards, or maybe where you pick up your new car after you've bought it online, not so much the Saturday morning, hundreds of people walking down and having a look at the car in the car yard as well. There is huge potential to make sure that we can provide houses and homes for people to live in the beautiful Mount Gravatt area. We have done this in Stones Corner, we have done this in Winham, and even though it was announced that Mount Gravatt was on the list in 2022, I'm not quite sure when it was coming, but I'm very excited to see that it's now Mount Gravatt's turn to shine and support the community in homes and houses. It is an area that has got a lot of opportunity, also in Central Fair, a site that has not been redeveloped for over 10 years. It's been a big hole in the ground for 10 years, and we're hoping that this might be the opportunity that the owners of that site will see that they can get some return on investment with homes there as well. Mount Gravatt Plaza has a very, very large site, that again, they've just purchased land near them as well, and I'm sure they'll be keen to speak to us as well. Mount Gravatt Central itself does have the beautiful awnings and the high-strip look of a high-strip of the years gone by, I must say, but I think the opportunity to bring feet to the street, it has definitely made the Mount Gravatt Central business hub a very active small chamber in that area, very excited. And with our recent addition of the Skurs Medical Centre, which has really changed the whole outlook in this area, I think this is the next step to making sure it is the must-see area. Of course, we are at the base of Mount Gravatt lookout, the best views to the city, councillor Adaman, that you will get anywhere in the city. We are a lot closer than Mount Cootha. It's a beautiful forest, it is definitely brimming with wildlife and diversity, it's got fantastic schools, it's got the amenity there, and when the metro comes online with the new network changes, the, the public transport is going to be outstanding. So thank you councillor Allen and Lord Mayor for accepting that this is definitely an area that we can see growth and we can support the housing strategy. And I look forward to working with my community now that the mapped area is out. Of course, there is no plan because we'll be going out to the community to speak to them about what they want to see in that area. There is no plan in the top drawer, like maybe the regional, South East Queensland Regional Plan, and this is what you're going to get regardless of what you ask for. We'll go out and speak to the community. And guess what? We'll speak to the people that live in the area, the people that work in the area, the people that own the land in the area. And we will come to that consensus on what is best for our area. But when we see the great outcomes we've had from the Mount Gravatt Corridor Neighbourhood Plan, I think everyone agrees that Mount Gravatt Central is ready for that kickstart, and I look forward to working with my community to do that. Thank you.
Any further debate? Lord Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. Look, I was intending to introduce this item, but I apologise, I was having a meeting with the Consul General of Japan, just out in the office there. And so, look, this is something that I obviously am keen to support. Councillor Adams' comments actually brought back memories because some people may not be aware, I was born in Holland Park, and the Mount Gravatt Central shops were actually my local shops before Garden City existed. And so some of my earliest memories as a child were being pushed in a pram in Mount Gravatt Central. And I remember the old Big Top as well, before there was a sort of Homemaker Centre arrangement there. And there was this giant rocket ship that you could climb up, that, anyway, I'm going down memory lane, that's not the point of today. But this is, this is an important part of our suburban renewal programme, and the second such to come through, there's others in the, in the works at the moment. But the critical thing, and the point that the leader of the opposition seems to be missing, is that we now have a new fast-track planning process that will help bring on planning changes sooner. Now, we are very much restricted by state government processes when it comes to changing our planning. our planning scheme. And at the moment, to change a section of city plan or to bring in a neighbourhood plan can easily take two, three or four years. And in some cases, we send a plan up to the state and it never comes back. The original Curilpa plan fits this, yeah. We sent the original Curilpa South Brisbane Plan to the state government, something like a decade ago, and it never, ever came back. It was sitting in someone's desk there. So that's an opportunity for new homes to be built a decade ago, which people could be living in now, but this just illustrates the point that we are reliant on state government processes. They can take time. Often, they take two, three or four years to make planning changes. And so we have negotiated with the state a new fast-track planning process, a Section eighteen, where we can get planning changes done in twelve months or less. And so this is happening with Stone's Corner, and now we're moving ahead with Mount Gravatt, and we're looking at other opportunities as well for suburban renewal in well-located areas, areas that have great access to facilities and good public transport that either exists or is coming. And in the case of Mount Gravatt Central, significant changes will be made and improvements will be made along the Logan Road Corridor as part of Metro Line One coming on, online in the middle of this year. So this definitely ticks the boxes in terms of well-located areas. As councillor Adams has pointed out, there's some great redevelopment sites that have sit there, sat there vacant, including the old Central Fair Shopping Centre site, which would be an ideal location to have some mixed-use development. There's other sites in the area. There's also plenty of green space that people can enjoy, great shopping facilities, it's a great location for more homes to be built. But we hear the opposition complaining. On the one hand, they complain that we haven't moved fast enough and we haven't delivered enough, yet on the other hand, everything we do propose, they vote against. All of the new homes that we put forward, they vote against. And so they say we're not doing enough, but when we put forward proposals that will bring forward more housing sooner, they vote against them. That's their record. The reality is, they want to complain, but then they don't vote for new housing supply. And so it is really disappointing that they've taken this approach. I am very proud of the way that councillor Adam, Allen and his team, and my team have been able to negotiate this Section eighteen planning process, because it is a game changer. It means we can respond quicker to bring on more homes, and homes by their very nature will take time to be constructed, but this allows us to move quicker, and instead of three, four years, this, this can be done in less than twelve months. It does involve community consultation, it will involve community consultation, it does involve sign-off from the state government, and it will. But obviously, we're starting this process, we want to get more homes built, and Mount Gravatt Central is a great opportunity to do that in an area well-located with infrastructure and transport. Thank you.
Any further debate? Councillor Messi.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak briefly to these amendments. I think it's been mentioned before that the documents before us have very little information, and I know that the administration councils have talked about why this has very little information, but we are talking about a blank piece of page. And I, I think we can all agree that there is a lack of detail at this stage, and it's going to be really hard to review any kind of concepts of thoughts. The amended document does speak to many objectives, including the providing the opportunities for additional housing supply and choice, revitalising the precinct as a vital misuse destination, unlocking opportunities for employment, education and improving connectivity and infrastructure. Of course, none of these objectives mention affordable housing, with affordable housing one of the most important keys to our housing crisis. And it's important because it provides stability for residents, provides equitable communities, and enables more entry into the housing market, and of course, affordable housing prevents homelessness. There are various other stated goals within this. As we know, there is very little information, so councils like myself and everyone else included will have to wait to see if these goals are actually truly translated into actionable outcomes. What I would like to talk about also is state some concerns around what is now clear, which is the tailored amendment process, Section eighteen of the Planning Act two thousand and sixteen. Previously, with the Curilpa TLPI and also with Stone's Corner, the expediated method wasn't clear. Now it's clearer with what it is from the state government. This section allows local governments to request customised planning processes, with the Department of State Development Infrastructure and Planning overseeing and approving the amendments. A couple of things that I'd like to place, the tailored process talks about the sustainability of the project, noting some concerns, not all developments are appropriate for a tailored amendment process, some projects particularly large or high-impact ones require more thorough and transparent scrutiny to ensure they meet community need and do not result in unintended negative consequences. Another thing that I'd like to raise is about public engagement, which is crucial. While the tailored amendment process allows for targeted consultation, this is within the amendment itself, it raises concerns that the narrowing of the scope of public input could mean that the community's concerns and needs are not fully addressed. If we're looking to revitalise Mount Gravatt, the consultation process needs to be robust enough to engage with the people that actually live, work and play in this area, and they also need to make sure and have faith in the planning system will listen to them and their concerns. Another concern I'll flag is, and it was clear today, the relationship with the LMP-controlled council and state government, and their admitted close cosy relationship with developers. This only just heightens the need for transparency and accountability in this process, it's essential that we don't allow the development of this area to simply serve the needs of developers, but ensure that it aligns with the needs of the whole community. I've talked about and been vocal about middle-density increases in the middle suburbs of Brisbane, particularly around high streets and commercial hubs. We believe well-planned, sustainable urban growth that balances the needs for housing, accessible housing with the access of community to amenities and services are vital to creating a livable and sustainable Brisbane. Our hope is, my hope is, is that when this amendment returns, it will do so sufficiently with the necessary infrastructure to support the future community, infrastructure such as frequent and reliable public transport, cycling and scooter safety, pedestrian connectivity and community assets like art spaces and neighbourhood centres. In the meanwhile, I urge my colleagues in the Change Bar and the wider community to stay vigilant. This amendment process, throughout this amendment process, we must assure that it aligns with the long-term interests of our city's residents, prioritising sustainable development, adequate infrastructure, housing affordability and a transparent process for all.
Any further debate? Councillor Strong.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on this clause. We, when we received it in the papers, I had a look at the, at the map, and we did a little bit of, you know, Google searching in regards to, to how big this, this actual precinct is, is, and, and the scope that it's going to take to, to, to hold a suburban renewal precinct project. Clearly, it's, it has been over the years, and I think it's been mentioned in previous debates, in previous debate, that it's sort of run down over the years since, since Westfield at Garden City is, was built. And that happens, and that's happened not just there, but it's also happened in other areas around Brisbane, when a very large shopping centre gets built. The, the, the business infrastructure around that, that used to cater for those residents before the big shopping centre was built, certainly they lose their clientele base for a lot of it, and, and it becomes really unsustainable, a lot of those businesses, and it's really sad to see that happen. But it happens not just in Australia but around the world. But the, the one thing that I sort of picked up from what the Lord Mayor was saying is the community consultation and, and the fast-tracking, that twelve months that he, that he mentioned, the fast-tracking with community consultation. And I'm thinking, well, I, I think the community consultation aspect is probably the first thing that's going to be suffered, is going to suffer, because certainly, I mean, twelve months seems a long time, but when it comes to community consultation, really it isn't. I mean, I have a sporting precinct in my ward that has now, will eventually take about two years for that to actually happen before they settle on a plan. And that's a very small precinct, right? This is like one point seven kilometres long, if, if, if measuring on Google Maps is accurate, which is, which is, which is huge. It's probably one of the biggest, I would imagine, that Brisbane's ever going to undertake. So I, I just, I worry about the community consultation more so than anything else. The intentions are good to upgrade, the intentions are good to put more housing potentially along there, probably, but as, as the previous debater said, there really isn't a plan yet. This is really just to get everything in, in order to, to bring together a plan. So we really don't even know how much this is going to cost, but I, but I imagine it's going to be in the millions, in the millions to pull together. But that community consultation's really got me worried, when fast-tracking, twelve months, and I just worry that that community consultation is actually going to suffer, and there won't be enough, there shouldn't, there wouldn't be enough input from the local community.
Point of honour, Mr Chair. Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Okay. Didn't even mention the name, but there you go. Yeah, I know. Anyways, so I think I'll, I'll finish my comments there, and, and, and just, I'll, I'll look forward to seeing the plan when it does come down, and actually how long that community consultation will actually take, if the whole thing is going to be only twelve months, what, what, how much consultation actually takes place. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Any further debate? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I didn't say, and nobody else said, that the consultation was going to be fast-tracked, as Section eighteen fast-tracks the state's responsibilities, not ours, the state's, and that's what holds us up. Consultation will be the same length it has always been.
Any further debate? Since there's no further debate, Lord Mayor, right of reply. Now I put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those that can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Collier, seconded by councillor Strong. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Yep. Clark, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-three in favour.
The report's been passed. Councilors, please return to your seats. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee, report.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. I move the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the eleventh of February, be adopted.
Seconded.
It was moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Perry. Another report of the Transport Committee meeting, dated Tuesday, eleventh of February two thousand and twenty-five, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. I want to just reflect briefly on the industrial dispute that will take place on Thursday. As I said in the question time, council is and remains committed to good faith negotiations with bus drivers, and we have made a fair offer of an above-inflation wage increase. We're very hopeful now that the RTBU will reconsider their opposition to what is a very reasonable offer. But I want to point out that our relationship with our bus drivers is bigger than with one union, our relationship is with those drivers directly, many of whom have worked for us, for the council, for many, many years, some of them many decades. We are always looking for ways to support our drivers, whether it's on the road or off the road or at home, particularly when they can't work and they need to return to work, all of those issues. We very much see our drivers in Transport for Brisbane as family, and sometimes families have disagreements, and that's okay. But we do want our drivers to get a pay rise, and we recognise the essential work that they do, and whatever happens with this dispute, I think we can all agree that we hope for it to be resolved as quickly as possible so that we can get that additional pay into the hands of those drivers who very much deserve it, whether they're a member of the union or not. Chair, I've talked a great deal about bridges lately, and I definitely don't want to talk about it again during my committee report now, but I would like to update the chamber on some happenings with a number of other bikeways in Brisbane. Of course, firstly, since two thousand and eighteen, we've been working with the state government to deliver a project called the North Brisbane Bike Way, the NBB. In two thousand and twenty-two, Brisbane was devastated by floods, and we halted work on the NBB for a short time to rebuild the existing Kedron Brook Bike Way. We promised to revisit that project when we were through the flood recovery process, and that's exactly what we did. The final stage, stage five, will connect the existing bike way on Dixon Street with a very popular Kedron Brook Bike Way. And as this chamber knows, finalising an alignment for stage five has been a complex issue for the local community. There were several options to complete this connection, and each route had its own strengths and weaknesses. Following extensive consultation with the community, we found that the community wanted us to finalise and complete stage five. However, the community wanted the Kent Road alignment that connects to Kedron State High School. We should remember the importance of listening to the community and making adjustments where required, and for this reason, we are moving ahead with changes to stage five of the North Brisbane Bike Way, and we'll be using now the Kent Road alignment. In particular, I want to thank councillor Dixon for her advocacy on this issue and the sometimes difficult constituent work that she has done on this. It would be hard for any councillor in this place to, to do what she has done with this bike way, and she has done it as a new councillor, and I commend her on that. She's listened to her residents, and she's found an outcome that will work for her constituents and cyclists alike. We now have a clear pathway forward and are committed to delivering this crucial missing link in our active transport network with the Kent Road alignment. Likewise, we are making progress on a number of other bikeways in Brisbane. We will deliver one of the last remaining links on the Morton Bay Cycleway, the shared path from Pritchard Street to Winham North Road in the coming months. Councillor Gibney has been briefed recently on this, or is about to receive a briefing, but the works on this one will commence in the coming months. As I said, Deputy Chair, this one is a partnership between council and the Department of Transport and Main Roads, and this work will actually be delivered by TMR. But council has done a lot of the heavy lifting to get us to this point, so I'm very pleased that that one will go to construction this year. I'm also pleased to report progress on the Viola Place Bike Way in councillor Allen's ward. We've now finalised the resumption process for that, for that very long-in-the-tooth bike way, I think that one's been on the card for almost a decade. That too will proceed to construction this year. And then finally, we will be commencing consultations soon on the design work for the missing link between the Western Freeway Bike Way and the River Loop at the University of Queensland, a very important link for all cyclists in the western suburbs, and something that this council and councillor Wolf, I know, are very much looking forward to delivering. With these key investments in bike way infrastructure, Deputy Chair, we'll keep Brisbane moving. Thank you.
Any further debate? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. And I note that councillor Murphy said he didn't want to talk about bridges. But that is, of course, the report that he brought to the Transport Committee last week, and what I will be talking about today. So the committee received a report about the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge opening. And, you know, it's great, it's great that the LNP did finally get on board with Labour's plan. I note that Labour originally proposed the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge in 2016, actually, and took a few years, but the LNP did catch up in 2020. And of course, you know, typical LNP in any major project. The hallmarks of it is that it did blow out its budget by $100 million, which is, you know, a legacy of pretty much anything, any major project the LNP touches these days. But, look, either way, I digress. This is an important link for active transport users and pedestrians, not only just from Kangaroo Point, but, and into the CBD and back and forth, but also from beyond. And I think that some of the key people who will be the main beneficiaries of this project do in fact come from the eastern suburbs, you know, suburbs in Morningside Ward, Doughboy Ward, and even Winham Manly as well. What the presentation didn't really address is, this is a big missing link, but what hasn't been addressed by this LNP council chronically over the past 20 years are those missing suburban bike links. And, and that's a real shame, because to have this incredible piece of infrastructure for so many people who have taken up the opportunity to use it is great. But when there is no way that you can safely get from a suburb like Morningside, riding along Winham Road, even into, you know, Shafton's Avenue, et cetera, that is a challenging ride. That is really, it's, it's not for the faint-hearted. And, you know, that is, of course, the LNP's approach, is they sink money into a couple of things that they think are really great, but then the suburbs miss out. And unfortunately, that's the reality of what a ride or, you know, an active transport journey might look like if you're coming from Morningside, or Tingalpa, or Winham, or wherever. So that is disappointing. What I want to know, and what I think the people want to know through you, Chair, is councillor Murphy, tell us, how much was the party bill in the end?
He said it was going to be big.
Yeah, like councillor Murphy said it was going to be huge, and it kept on getting bigger, and the budget kept on getting more and more exorbitant. So I would love to know, and I know the people of Brisbane would love to know, how much did you spend on the party? I reckon, like, we could take some bets, but maybe half a million? I don't know. The last, the last part, yeah, the last party councillor Murphy threw was, what, 100 and...
150 grand.
150 grand, something like that, which is just, yeah, absolutely obscene, especially when you think about, we've been having conversations about just those basic things that council can't even seem to get right. On one hand, you've got 150,000-dollar parties, and hundreds of thousands of dollars being spent on overseas travel for politicians. But we can't, yeah, we can't get the basics right. It's, it's very frustrating. Yeah, can't get Balmoral Cemetery mown. Although I do note that after an appearance on the nightly news, there are a couple of people in there doing it today, like, straight away. That's, that's all it takes, apparently, is you get a couple of angry, irate residents who have only been raising this issue for, I think, a year. Think a year. It's been ignored by the LNP. But when you turn up on the news, they, they shall act. That's business as usual for this LNP council. Well, yeah, we can do so much better than that. Anyways, back to the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. Like I said, the hallmark really is, you know, it's, it is an important project. Clearly, people of Brisbane have wanted it. They are voting with their patronage. You know, there are heaps and heaps of people who are using this important piece of infrastructure. But we will be critical of the $100 million cost blowout, especially when you think about, the thing that really changed was the fact that the LNP council made the very clear decision to put two fancy restaurants on the bridge at the cost of ratepayers' dollars. So that's what improved, apparently, according to the LNP. So, yeah, good piece of infrastructure, but it could have been done a bit better.
Any further debate? Councillor Messi.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. A rise is free on the presentation on the Green Bridge. The numbers that we're seeing today are a testament to what the Greens have been advocating for, for over a decade. Investment, it's true. It's funny, but we've, we've been harping on for it, that investment in pedestrian and active transport infrastructure will result in a healthier, more connected, and more sustainable Brisbane. And while it's true that excluding the outliers of the launch on New Year's Eve does slightly lower the daily figures, I think we all know through you, Chair, councillor Murphy isn't shy about selectively interpreting data to make a political point. Nonetheless, we're still seeing a 51% increase in the daily usage to the estimates. And that's a fantastic outcome. So I think it's safe to raise a glass to another successful Greens initiative. Oh, come on. We should all be able to have a laugh. You're welcome. Nevertheless, the Bridges in Sess underscores the importance of continuing and expanding pedestrian and active transport infrastructure projects. Earlier through you, Chair, councillor Murphy talked about some projects, but what we're missing? The River Walk from Kangaroo Point to Marlborough Park, the Vulture Street Byway, and of course, the West End to To Wong Green Bridge. But while I'm at it, I'm going to share a couple of other things through you, Chair, that councillor Murphy would be welcome to copy and paste. Let's close down the rest of Riverside Drive for pedestrians and active transport users. Let's explore turning Boundary Street into a pedestrian mall like Queen Street, or a mall with public transport like George Street in Sydney, with more public spaces for people to connect, hang out, and hang out with in the heart of West End. This would be a positive for residents and increase foot traffic for local businesses. And what about Russell Street? Let's boulevard it and ensure that the jewel of our city's South Bank has a safe entry for active transport and is surrounded by sustainable urban forests as its western entrance, creating a fitting entrance for South Bank. Infrastructure like green bridges have the potential to be transformative, but they are not the silver bullet that will solve the numerous failures of the current LNP administration when it comes to public transport, save active transport lids, and the ongoing incoming challenges that inner-city density will deliver. They are not the silver bullet. We must still address significant gaps in our public transport network in Kangaroo Point with the 234 and the lack of City Cats. In West End, that despite the population's growth, has been waiting for a second ferry terminal for 14 years. However, as the Greens have been saying for years, through you, Chair, sorry, councillor Collier, this is the first time that I've heard that the Green Bridge was an ALP idea. But we have been supporting green bridges for years, and we are seeing that proven here that green bridges do work. So here's to more successful Greens initiatives. And to councillor Murphy, I hope that my list is sufficient enough for you to copy in the next couple of years.
Any further debate? Council Kessidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Rise to speak on the Kangaroo Point Bridge. And a good example, as we heard from councillor Collier, of residents paying more and getting less under this LNP regime, of course. Kangaroo Point Bridge is a great case in point. A flash party, lots of announcements and re-announcements about the design and redesign to include restaurants and cafes, all that sort of stuff. So lots, lots of spin. But in the end, particularly on the southern side of the bridge, a somewhat isolated piece of infrastructure that didn't over all the years that, since 2019, that the Lord Mayor came on board with the Kangaroo Point Bridge as part of his five-bridge programme, should have been planning. Six, we're going on six years now of time that, that infrastructure south of the Kangaroo Point Bridge could have been delivered in conjunction with opening this piece of infrastructure to have even better use and more connected use and safer use. But unfortunately, a missed opportunity there under the LNP. So we know, we hear lots of excuses from the LNP about why they can and can't do things. We know that the Lord Mayor promised five green bridges for $550 million, of course, scrapped the Bell Barrett to Weycol one, indefinitely postponed the St Lucia to West End one, now says the To Wong to West End one is too expensive to do, so they can't do that. But when you add up the costs of the $300 million for the Kangaroo Point Bridge, and I think the 70-odd million dollars or so for the Breakfast Creek Bike Way extension, despite the eye-watering blowouts on the Kangaroo Point Bridge, there's still $180 million in that bridge budget. So where did that money go? The Lord Mayor says there's no money to be building the To Wong to West End Bridge, has delayed indefinitely the St Lucia to West End Bridge, and scrapped the fifth one altogether. But according to the Lord Mayor, there was $180 million left in the bridge budget. Well, there certainly should be, even after all those blowouts. I guess they spent on the metro, probably. I imagine would have had to go into the metro black hole. So more broken promises. But on the cafe that's part of the Kangaroo Point Bridge, Mulga Bill, interesting choice of name. The Kangaroo Point Bridge finally opened, as we know, after $100 million cost blowout. We don't know how much that party cost, so unfortunately was unable to attend the opening party. I went to the Cricket that day instead at the Gabba, a perfectly fine stadium to be hosting the Olympics in. Ratepayer-funded parties. I never supported QE2. We never supported QE2. Here, never, 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 never. We always supported the Gabba. We joined you in the motion to support the Gabba. Of course we supported the Gabba. We did. We did. You got to remember these things, see? You got to remember these things. But, you know, ratepayer-funded parties are, of course, one of the LNP's favourite things, councillor Murphy's favourite things, $100,000 here, $150,000 there, couple of $100,000, we presume, on the Kangaroo Point one. They love that sort of stuff. But, you know, and they love the spin around all of this, whether it's on their parish trips and, and, well, the travel, overseas travel, lots of spin on it. But, so obviously, there's a big team of spin doctors in the Lord Mayor's office. But I'm surprised, I'm surprised that they didn't raise alarm bells over the name Mulga Bills for the Kangaroo Point Bridge Cafe. It's named after Mulga Bill, as councillor Murphy said, who's a character made famous in Banjo Patterson's poem. Now, if you've read the poem, you know that Mulga Bill thought very highly of himself, and he claimed to be the best cyclist ever. He also loved to spend money and look the part. Sounds just like councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor. And much like Mulga Bill, those two politicians are all talk. But of course, you know, once in control of the bike, Mulga Bill veered off-track and frightened off locals, and let out a despairing shriek before he crashed. I guess Adrian Schrinner really is, Brisbane's very own Mulga Bill. Now, we know the LNP mayor loves to splash money and tell everyone how good he is. But, you know, Brisbane residents' chair really are being taken for a ride. Congestion is getting worse. The so-called metro is a multi-billion-dollar bendy bus. Our suburbs are being neglected at the expense of overseas travel for LNP politicians and fancy opening parties for gold-plated infrastructure. And the LNP have been in power for 21 years, and residents are tired of the big-noting Mulga Bill character on that side of the chamber, the prince of PR, Adrian Schrinner. Brisbane deserves much better than him.
Any further debate? Councillor Strong.
Yes, thank you. I don't know how to follow that, that, that last part of the debate. I don't think I can do mine justice to, anyways, Mulga Bill and all that. Anyways, so I'll just go local. Yeah, I'm going to go loco. Well, I think that's what councillor Murphy thinks I am, loco, logo, or something, loco or something. I don't know. He, he mentioned me a, a, a number of times earlier in the meeting, and I, I, I was, you know, you really struck a nerve in me, and I, I was just flabbergasted that he actually mentioned my name. God, keep doing it, keep doing it. Sorry, Chair. Okay, back to the Green Bridge. Okay, so it wouldn't be surprising that, when I talk to my residents in the western suburbs in the, in my ward, and I tell them about the Green Bridge, or they tell me about what they think of the Green Bridge. And a few of them have come to me and said, yes, we've, we've walked across it. It's, it's a nice walk, it's a beautiful view of the river, and, and it'll be great when the restaurants opened up and everything. But they said there's one missing thing on this bridge. And I, I said, yeah. And he says, well, there's no public transport on it. And there's no bus service or anything like that. He says, if you want to reduce congestion really over in the Morningside Ward or over that side of the, the river, you, you probably need to have maybe thought about putting a, putting a bus service across, at least, a bus service across. So they're, they're quite, they're quite surprised when that's, when they, when they, when they actually see it. But even, even before it opened up, I, I had residents that were, you know, would talk about the bridges across Brisbane in general. And, and they think that it's a good idea to put a few more bridges across Brisbane to try to get the traffic moving, and for less congestion. And yes, we'll, we always need those walkways and cycleways across these bridges. But at least, they're thinking about bringing cars across, of course. That's their general impression of what they'd like to see. And, and it was just, it was just interesting to get that feedback from a few of my residents that actually had, had actually gone across the bridge and walked across the bridge. Now, in regards to the party, of course, I know councillor Murphy was, I think he's made the comment that the, the more we keep mentioning it, the bigger the parties will get. So I'm with councillor Kessidy. I think it's going to be around about, we will spend it about, I don't know, $30, $35 a head, or more. And gee, you can get a really nice restaurant meal for that. Yeah, e- even in the city, even in the city. And I tell you what, that was a big, a big nosh-up. I'm sure it was. I, I don't know what you gave them at the party, what you gave in the, in the, in the form of giveaways, right, in those little bags and things like that. That may have mounted up a bit of money. But it'll be really interesting to find out what, what, what the, what the costing of the party was, just to put, just to put down those, those comments of spending too much. Or maybe you won't. Maybe they'll say, that's just a ridiculous amount of money. Anyways, maybe, maybe councillor Murphy could get up and, when he sums up and let, let us know how much that was, and put us out of our collective misery, because we, we really want to know. But anyways, the Green Bridge, again, is, is, was just one of five that were part of an election promise. And, and I, I, I forgot about that extra $180 million that is still in the fund. And where has it gone? So anyways, it'll be interesting to, you know, to find out where that went, or who knows where it went. As you say, it could have gone into Metro, it could have gone into Metro. It, it needed it. It was a big black hole in Metro. But anyways, I'll just finalise my comments there. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Any further debate? No further debate. Councillor Murphy, write of reply.
I got a, I got a deputy chair. There's too much in that. There was too much in that. Look, okay. Firstly, to councillor Collier, that was quite an extraordinary Janus-based contribution on the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, because she tried to tell us, congratulations for getting on board. But then she also said, you know, the reason that we haven't built any missing links in this city is because we've been building this Kangaroo Point Bridge. And that's been the criticism that we've received from the Labour Party for the last five years while we've been building this bridge, is that we were obsessed with inner-city vanity projects, and to the extent that we were actually not prioritising links across the city. We heard the criticism level at us time and time and time and time again. But now that it's popular, that it's open, oh, well, you took Labour's idea. You stole it. And so I thought, well, there'll be evidence of this. There should be some evidence online or something, you know, where they announced it. But I went and found, five years ago, when we did make the announcement that we were going to build this bridge...
going to build this bridge, headline from the Brisbane Times, and you can look this up, Kangaroo Point Pedestrian Bridge, Just a Line on a Map, Labour Says. Labour candidate for Lord Mayor Rod Harding has decried Brisbane City Council's preliminary plans for a pedestrian bridge between Kangaroo Point and the City Botanic Gardens as light on detail. Does that sound like it was their idea that they announced it at that election? Now, forgetting the fact they didn't get elected and they couldn't deliver on their commitment. Oh, 2016, sorry, okay, I'll take the interjection from councillor Collier. They made the commitment in 2016. So what you have to do to believe councillor Collier is you have to suspend disbelief. The commitment that they made in 2016, they automatically remake it every election they lose thereafter, even when their Lord Merrill candidate doesn't make it. That means it was their idea. Why don't we forget the fact, why don't we forget the fact that actually the real people who should be rolling in their graves at the fact that both the Greens and the Labour Party have tried to steal this idea is John Petrie and Owen Jones, who came up, came up with the idea in 1860. So I, they did, they did. So, and, and I must admit, whilst, whilst the Lord Mayor, he announced this plan to build this bridge on his first day in office, it's likely that he was inspired by someone that came before him to build this bridge. But it certainly was not Rod Harding or the Labour Party or, you know, any one of the Merrill candidates or the Greens political party. But you know what, Deputy Chair, as they say, success has many fathers and failure is an orphan. And we are happy that there are so many people out there trying to claim this bridge as theirs. But what I do know is that the name on the plaque is the Lord Mayor's. So I think that also counts for something as well. Now, I count, well, there's a couple of other names, I don't know. I have never been, I haven't had a look, but. And, you know, councillor Cassidy talked about the $180 million. Well, it's true, we do have $180 million remaining within the program. But we have said, and we have been consistent about this, that the next bridge will cost significantly more than that, more like $280 million. So we're seeking significant contributions from the federal and state government before we embark on that project. And so that project will remain on the drawing board until we've made the appropriate business case to our partners to be able to release that funding. Now, councillor Cassidy also, I, I think this is the first time that councillor Cassidy has ever mentioned to the chamber that he never supported CUSAC or QE two. Did everybody hear that one? He said, I never supported CUSAC. Well, I never, I never heard councillor Cassidy never support CUSAC in the whole time.
Councillor Cassidy, your point of order.
That claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Okay, I think he must have got a text from the now leader of the opposition saying, mate, are you saying that you didn't support CUSAC? Because I think that was a really good idea. Because we never, when they announced CUSAC, ever heard them criticize that project while Labour were in office. They were quiet as a church mouse. But now, oh, I never supported CUSAC. But it is a shame, councillor Cassidy, that you were at the cricket on the day that the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge opened, because with a performance like that, we could have had you as the clown. And we could have had you as the entertainment there, because that was truly one of the funniest things I have ever seen. But it is a shame that you went to the cricket, because we had a tremendous opening. We had tens of thousands of people come down. It was such a great event. And we had a spot for you, we had a spot for you. And I will say, I wanted to spend more money on the opening, but the Lord Mayor didn't let me. The budget came in under $96,000. So there you go, I've given you the figure and you can, you can do that.
Councillor Cassidy, your misrepresentation.
Thanks very much, Chair. I, in fact, rose on my feet in a point of order in early 2024, when challenged by the then Deputy Mayor councillor Adams as to whether we supported CUSAC, and I made it very clear that we didn't. So it's on the council record, it's in the council minutes, councillor Murphy just needs to do a little more homework.
Now, I put the Transport Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor, councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move the report, the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 11th of February, 2025, be adopted.
And I gladly second the report, Mr Deputy Chair.
It's moved by councillor Wines, seconded by councillor Toomey. Another report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 11th, February 2025, be adopted, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr Chair, and thanks to councillor Toomey for his ongoing support. Can I just talk about some of the, some of the projects and programs that were discussed within the presentation viewed by the committee members last week? So it was a presentation about local network priority improvement programs and congestion busting programs. They're all part of our plan to keep Brisbane moving. These are largely smaller scale, local community projects that seek to get, in particular, congestion busting projects, seek to get a high value of improvement with very small cost, oftentimes preferential for merely signs and line changes. Sometimes there's work with concrete build outs and things. LNP covers a whole range of things, which include local area network improvements, local area traffic management, these types of projects. So we heard about these from our offices. They spoke about a number of key projects, including Eagle Terrace at Milton Road and Orkin Flower, which was about improving operational access to Milton Road from the southbound. It improves operational, it was an operational uplift without any meaningful infrastructure upgrade, it was merely a change to signs and lines, got meaningful uplift. Ash Grove Avenue at Waterworks Road, I can, well, it's in councillor Toomey's ward, it is not far from my place, and I can assure you that this operational change has improved the operation of the Ash Grove Avenue and Waterworks Road intersection. I can see that it's improved the operations for motor vehicles and pedestrians, but I also hear, so I've also received from feedback, I think from councillor Toomey, speaking to improve safety around bus station stop access, if that's right.
Does students use the pedestrian line far enough?
Excuse me, that, yeah, better, better and safer access by students using the correct access points for the, for that area. Winham Road at Bogner Street, Tingalpa, improved traffic flow visibility and improved bike lane safety. On the, on the smaller, on the smaller size, Lanny Street, excuse me, Heather Street and Vale Street, Wilston, which was a Lanny or a local area, excuse me, a local area network improvement, which was about improving the signs at the sightlines in particularly hilly and older roads in our community. Now, I know that a lot of our communities tend to fall in a range of categories, but one of them is those older communities that were cut into the hill in ways that predate motor vehicles. And sometimes it's very difficult to retrofit them for motor vehicles. This is one way we can do that, to make those intersections safer. There was, of course, Colebrook Avenue at Bodes at Road in Maruka, which included new pedestrian crossings, improved visibility and safer vehicle movements. And Hemant Tingalpa Road, Hemant with dedicated right turn lanes, improved crossings and enhanced pedestrian cyclist safety. So they're just a handful of projects we deliver through that program area. There are more to come this year. It's a program area that, that, as I say, is about delivering meaningful operational and safety upgrades for relatively small costs. And I think it's been a really successful program that, as you've heard, has been available to all parts of the city. The committee also considered four petitions, two of which were in Forest Lake Ward, two of which were in McGregor Ward. The two in Forest Lake Ward were supported unanimously, the two in McGregor Ward, councillor Strunk was a holdout from unanimity, but I'm sure he'll explain why today. But to speak to the, one of those was the request, the council installed traffic signals at the intersection of school and Miles Pludding Road. That is, of course, part of our, it will be part of our long term upgrade to that community with, with, with particular provision of pedestrian and cycle facilities. It is included in the long, excuse me, in the local government infrastructure plan. That will depend on a range of issues, including the development of that community over time. Requesting, the second petition that was not unanimous, requesting council widen Miles Pludding Road to four lanes between Ridgell Road and Brisbane, Brisbane Technology Park eight mile planes. I want to assure that all councillors, that we have already secured 70% of the required land to do this project. We will continue to acquire the land as it becomes available in preparation of this expansion. In particular, as development applications are made, we will acquire the required land using the, once again, the local government infrastructure plan provisions to be able to acquire that land. It is very much part of our plan to deliver that. We, as I say, we're acquiring the land, preparations are being made, and I look forward to further comments, if there are any, on all of those reports, all those positions, all those petitions and any items within the report.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. Listen, can I ask for the petitions, petitions one through four to be taken seriatum for voting purposes?
So, so you want each one taken seriatum?
For voting purposes.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to speak in regards to, briefly speak in regards to the presentation, right? But the majority of my time, I'm going to speak about the two petitions in my ward. The presentation was quite an interesting one in regards to the congestion busting, congestion busting presentation. I had a couple of the items that were, were mentioned in the, in that presentation. I had one of those items, which was a refuge, pedestrian refuge in college, just on the corner of College Avenue and Joseph Banks. And I did mention that we had a few problems with that refuge that was built a couple of years ago. There's been at least three or four occasions where that refuge has been taken out by vehicle. And I asked, I asked the presenters through the chair if they could have a look and see if there is some remedial work that can be done to try to improve that, try to, well, to try to improve that, the fact that it keeps getting hit by vehicles. Anyways, I took that on board and I'm just glad to announce that I, we had a call from that team and they're going to come out and have a look and see if they can do something to remediate that problem. Also, turning lanes, of course, was part of that presentation as well, and I've had a number of turning lanes extended, probably about five or six since I've been councillor, and they really have improved the, the congestion issues within those intersections. Now, moving on to the petitions, the first one that I want to talk about is the one at asking for lights to be installed at Forest Lake Boulevard and Garden Road roundabout. And this is the, really, the, the main interest into the Forest Lake suburb itself. And there's been a lot of development along Garden Road leading up to it over the last five or six years, so much so that really all, all that, all that Garden Road area will, will be commercialized or is being commercialized as we speak. So there's a lot of traffic on either side of Garden Road that will be, that will be using this, this roundabout, right, to, to get in and out of their business areas. So many, many years ago, Delphin, I know, planned on putting a set of lights here, but never got around to it when they had decamped from the Forest Lake development. And so nothing has really been done to try to ameliorate that congestion issue there. Consequently, I'm, I'm in support of the fact that it needs to be upgraded. I understand the council, it is on the Ljeff from 26 to 31. I think it probably needs to be done in the next few years, especially when that commercial development on the west side comes on stream. Half of it's open now, but there's a lot more to come. So it's really going to be needed to try to, try to control that traffic in that intersection. The other, the other petition was asking for parking to be, for more parking in a particular street in Forest Lake. And just Blackwood Street, Forest Lake. And yes, they're asking for actually a, a green space area to be reengineered into a, a car park area for like four cars, so that they can, so that the, that the street that they live in, which is a cul-de-sac, right, that cars, that, that, it sort of relieves that pressure of cars parking on one side and then them not being able to get out of their properties from, from the opposite side. So unfortunately, I, I, I sort of agree with council that we can't really reengineer all these, all these streets within, within the Forest Lake suburb, because to do so would, would cost quite a lot of money. And we lose a lot of green space as well, because this area that they want to, to turn into a car parking area, they would lose about half the green space in that, in that, that green space area just across from some of the houses. So I think, again, I'm in support of the petition one and four. We're not in support of petitions two and three for various reasons, and I'll leave the debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A, the presentation about local road projects in Brisbane Infrastructure. A note with interest, councillor Wines deceptive statement that these programs are open to all parts of the city. Clearly, that's an untrue statement. These projects are not delivered out at Tennyson Ward and certainly it's not for a lack of asking over many, many years, both directly in meetings with council officers and also through the budget process and also through petitions and other sources. So I think, I think that it should go on the record just how inequitable the funding is that the Lord Mayor, councillor Wines and the civic cabinet LNP members are, how inequitable they are, when looking at where to fund critical local road projects around the city. There are dozens and dozens of them waiting to be done in my ward. Now, in the presentation itself, of course, there are a number of projects that are mentioned. Eagle Terrace, Milton Road, Orkin Flower, LNP project, Ash Grove Avenue, Ash Grove, LNP project, Winham Road, Tingalpa, LNP project, Vale Street, Wilston, LNP project, Tingalpa Road, Tingalpa, LNP project, and there is one project in an ALP ward in Colebrook Avenue in Maruka. So overwhelmingly, the funding that councillor Wines is talking about is in LNP parts of the city. And certainly, there's no funding in my ward, and there hasn't been for many years. The last time that there was a project in one of these programs that was discussed was on Fairfield Road at Yarong Pili, where a turning lane was to be extended. And council not only started the consultation, then rolled the funding over from one year to the next, but then cancelled it at the last minute because the road, there was a small traffic island and apparently that made the road too narrow to extend the turning lane. It's a highly congested intersection at the corner of Sherwood Road, Mural Avenue and Fairfield Road. And years later, council's still done nothing about it, despite knowing it was a problem, acknowledging it was a problem, funding it, not delivering it in the year they originally promised it, and then, you know, saying they'd do it the next year and then not doing it in that year either. But it just shows that you can't believe a single word the LNP say. They certainly do not fund projects in all parts of the city. They overwhelmingly fund projects in their own wards. And just another example of that, particularly the Safe School Infrastructure Program. So that's a, a new program, of course. The way the budget works, we're asked to make budget submissions, of course, but the Lord Mayor introduces new projects or programs every year, but doesn't tell us. And surprisingly, LNP projects are predominantly or exclusively funded when these new types of programs are started. And a great example of that is, as councillor Wines has listed here, the Safe School Travel Infrastructure Program. So if you have a little look at what's funded this year, it would be the Kedron Safer School Precinct, so that's Mount A, Padua, St Anthony's, LNP ward, Mansfield Safer School Project, LNP ward, Winham Manly Safer School Precinct, LNP ward, Indrapili Safer School Precinct, LNP ward. So there's no attempt to even throw one bone to the ALP, nothing like that at all. And of course, you know, there's problems around most major schools and school precincts. And of course, you know, there's problems around most major schools and school precincts right around the city, including as council would know in Corinda, which is one of the schools with the highest, the highest problems when the, the enforcement project around schools is undertaken. And, and council continues to do nothing around Corinda State High School or Corinda State School. So I just would like everybody listening to know that when the LMP Chair stands up and says that the funding is allocated to all parts of the city, that's a false statement. Funds are either 100% allocated to LMP wards, as is the case with the Safer Schools Travel Infrastructure Programme, or, or in the case of the presentation.
Your time has expired.
LMP wards.
Thank you. Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. I rise to speak on the presentation about local network priority improvements and congestion busting programmes. And my experience is very similar to the one that councillor Johnston has had in her time here. In my recollection is that in my ward there are quite a lot of intersections that require minor, minor upgrades, not major four-way intersections with two lanes on each road and that sort of thing. Certainly not to that extent, but, but ones that have been identified by council officers that have been sitting on a list, which they say in response all the time, this project is listed and is awaiting funding in the budget from the Lord Mayor and is competing against other citywide priorities. But the priorities are never put onto those projects, despite some of those intersections like on Brighton Terrace, Wakefield Street, Ninth Avenue, which is on the old highway to the Sunshine Coast. That was the highway essentially over the bridge to Redcliffe and beyond. Still a very busy intersection with a lot of traffic coming from Redcliffe and making that turn at that intersection to avoid the middle of Sandgate. To, to take the route that is recommended by council in its road hierarchy is a very dangerous intersection. It's dangerous for pedestrians, dangerous for cyclists and dangerous for people driving through there with cars. And the crash data corroborates this and verifies this and, and the investigations by council officers verifies this as well. But year after year after year, it doesn't receive funding for an intersection upgrade to include signalisation. Same thing down the intersection of Zulmy Road and Groth Road. The, the list can go on and on and on. I don't believe in my ten, almost ten years here that there's been a single intersection upgrade with lights in my ward. The Murphy Road, Murphy Road project inherited when the redistribution happened. And that was a very, very major project that really needed to be happening with the, the widening of Murphy Road to two lanes, almost the whole way through except Zulmy. But again, another, another, another intersection near Pretoria Street that needs upgrading to include a, a second lane through there on Murphy Road and Hanford Road, which is a major, a major route through the north side, which continues to languish under this LMP regime. And so what councillor Wines described in those handful of projects that he would probably use to describe his rhetoric of saying, keeping Brisbane moving, that's what they say, isn't it? Despite these intersections that I've talked about and councillor Johnson's talked about being terribly congested, terribly unsafe, he would use them as examples. But when you think about it, the $4 billion that the Lord Mayor says he's expending each and every year, we're talking about now a shrinking infrastructure budget in the suburbs of Brisbane, which just funds a couple of intersection upgrades each year. And, and quite often those projects are carried over or can't be completed on a council road, a council intersection with council problems can't be completed without the intervention of other levels of government. So we've got this situation where the LMP crow about building state government infrastructure in the city thus ways. They, they say that's a good thing that they're building state government infrastructure. But then when it comes to building council intersections out in the suburbs of Brisbane, they, the LMP say they can't do it without other levels of government funding it because it's too hard for the LMP to manage the budget. The LMP just simply can't manage the council budget to allocate enough resources to deliver a value for money proposition to people living in those suburbs. And we're not, you know, some of these intersections don't require signalisation, that can be tricky. I've had to pay for designs out of suburban enhancement fund at intersections that will never get lights on them, but increasing pedestrian safety infrastructure around zebra crossings, around suburban streets, small suburban streets that intersect large neighbourhood streets because there's never any money to progress those projects through the capital budget. So then council officers say maybe you'd like to fund it out of the suburban enhancement fund and you spend $50,000 on a design there and $80,000 on a design there. And then they come and brief you and say, would you like to do it? It's just going to cost half a million dollars to put the splitter islands in and the build outs and the turf. So then next year you've got to make the decision whether you allocate the entirety of your suburban enhancement fund on one intersection upgrade. When we know there's a $4 billion budget and according to councillor Wines, you know, a billion dollars in the infrastructure budget, most of which is depreciating assets, as we know, the situation is untenable. To make Brisbane safer and according to the LMP moving, we need more investment in the capital budget.
And that now brings us councillors under the provision of section thirty-five thirteen of the meeting's local law on the expiration of the period allowed for debate or committee reports. I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So in the current report, we are taking all items separately. So item A, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. Item B, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against no, the ayes have it, that is carried. Item C, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Councillor's ayes to my right and noes to my left. And while you are moving there, councillor Johnston, can I ask what your, your vote is?
Uh, no, Madam Chairman.
So you're abstaining.
No, no means no, Madam Chairman.
Oh, you mean, yep, thank you. Please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and six against.
So the motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now vote on item D, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Councillor Johnston, your vote.
No, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and six against.
So that motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item E to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. Moving now to the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it, that is carried. Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. City Standards Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it, motion carried. Community and the Arts Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it, that's carried. And finally, Finance and City Governance Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it, that's also carried. Petitions, councillors, may I have a, are there any petitions? Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a petition requesting council install a bidirectional bike lane on Herschel Street, Brisbane City.
Any further petitions? Councillor Dixon?
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions are presented as rece, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chairman. I note that in my absence last week, Madam Chairman, that you, councillor Wong, councillor Allen, I believe it was, moved a motion referring me to the OIA in what was described as under section twenty-one ten B of the meeting's local law. Madam Chairman, I draw to your attention that section ten B of the meeting's local, twenty-one ten B of the meeting's local law states that if the third or more order has occurred within twelve months, that, and I quote, "The matters are dealt with at the next meeting of council." And I note that the wording of the motion that you sent to me and that was moved in the chamber does not meet the rules of the meeting's local law. There were in fact four meetings on the twenty-sixth of November, the fourth of December, the tenth of December and the fourth of February twenty-twenty-five before this motion was moved. So Madam Chairman, in the first instance, I am seeking your advice on why you allowed a, an incompetent motion that did not meet the requirements of the meeting's local law to be moved last week.
Thank you councillor Johnston. It was once I was made aware and we, that motion was carried last week, so in the last meeting.
Madam Chairman, my procedural point of order is why did you, as the Chair of Council, knowingly send through an incompetent motion which does not meet the requirements of the meeting's local law? When there were four meetings after the last, and I would say incorrect ruling that you made anyway, but why did you allow an incompetent motion that does not comply with section twenty-one ten B of the meeting's local law to be moved in the chamber last week?
Councillor Johnston, it was a valid motion from the floor, but if you want to write further or comment further, you can do so yourself after the meeting.
Madam, Madam Chairman, the appropriate thing to do is, as you and councillor Wong and councillor Allen did last week.
Councillor Johnston, I allowed it because it was a competent motion and so I do not uphold your point of order. We are now moving to general business. Are there any speakers?
Okay, point of, point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I move that you have engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct by allowing an incompetent motion about another councillor from being moved and not undertaking your role as the Chair of Council.
Seconded. A motion of unsuitable meeting conduct of the Chair has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. I'll now vacate the Chair and leave the chamber.
Any debate on this motion? Councillor Johnston?
Uh, yes, Mr Deputy Chair. I also think, Mr Deputy Chair, in the interests of propriety, that given you moved this motion last week, you have a conflict of interest with respect to this matter. And perhaps you are not the appropriate person to be acting in the role given that you moved the inappropriate motion. So there's a pretty clear conflict of interest here, I think.
I don't believe I have a conflict of interest.
Right.
Please continue with your debate.
Fine, well I guess that just shows pretty much the problem we've got here, isn't it? What most people won't know is, uh, after hours last Monday night, councillor Sandy Landers sent me a motion, uh, sent me a notice saying that, that after three notices of inappropriate conduct, that she had reviewed the minutes and she accordingly, to meet the requirements of section twenty-one ten, which she said must be addressed, she therefore notified me that she intended to deal with the requirements of section twenty-one ten and I quote, "I'm therefore writing to you to advise you, I intend to deal with the requirements of section twenty-one ten of the meeting's local law by seeking a motion at the council meeting tomorrow that the matter be referred to the Office of the Independent Assessor." Now, as I've outlined in my point of order, seeking some explanation, section twenty-one ten B of the meeting's local law is very specific. It states that if there is the requisite breaches of the meeting's local law, that the matters are dealt with at the next meeting of council. Now, as I've outlined, there were in fact four meetings of council before councillor Landers dealt with this matter. I presume by getting councillor Wong to move the motion and councillor Allen as well. But there were four meetings, as I said, the twenty-sixth of November, the fourth of December, the tenth of December and the fourth of February twenty-twenty-five. And it wasn't until the fifth meeting that councillor Landers sent this email and then the motion was moved. Now, it seems rather perverse to me that the LMP can deliberately breach the meeting's local law to take action against me for what they allege are breaches of the meeting's local law. That is both unethical, that is improper, and the motion was not validly moved last week. Now, unfortunately I couldn't be at the meeting last week and I know that many councillors spoke on this and I want to thank those that, that did speak up. But what is very clear is the LMP are prepared to deliberately breach the rules of the meeting's local law to take unethical and unauthorised action against me. Now, the role of the Chair of Council is to act in accordance with the meeting's local law. It is her role to uphold the meeting's local law. In this case, she was both the prosecutor and the judge, as councillor Wong is being at this very time, which is in itself a conflict of interest. But in doing this, she wrote a motion that did not comply with the meeting's local law under section twenty-one ten B, and then allowed that motion to be debated, moved and passed in the council chamber. It appears it was done knowingly because the language in the motion that was moved in the chamber is very different to the language that is in section twenty-one ten B. Now, if the Chair does not follow the meeting's local law, then she is engaging in unsuitable meeting conduct. She's in a position of trust and respect in the chamber and has failed in her duty to fairly, honestly and respectfully uphold the council code of conduct and the meeting's local law. It is clear the action she has taken against me is a form of bullying and intimidation. And I will not stand for what is an obvious breach of the meeting's local law to deliberately take action against me.
This is a great speech. Deputy Chair, councillor Johnson started this by asking you for a ruling on a past meeting. That's incompetent. She's then disputed your ruling on that and then asked the Chair to leave so as to effectively have a motion debate on a motion that she didn't put on the notice paper, which is what she's just done. If she wants to do this, she needs to put a motion on the notice paper. This is an attempt to use the rules to debate a procedural motion and her own motion is incompetent. I mean, talk about hypocrisy. So I just ask for you to get a legal ruling on whether that whole set of events that just occurred was allowed. Because you can't actually make a ruling on a past meeting, I believe, Mr Deputy Chair.
If only councillor Murphy listened. This is a motion of unsuitable meeting conduct against the Chair of Council, which has been properly moved and seconded.
Point of order, you've, you've got a standing request and councillor Johnson is speaking over you while you're trying to respond to a valid, a valid response to a councillor's question of you.
Councillor Murphy, I don't uphold your point of order. And councillor Johnson has one more minute to speak and he is councillor Wong. Yep, I, look, I don't uphold, I don't uphold your point of order at this time, but yeah, thank you. Councillor Johnson, you have one more minute to speak.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, and it just shows that the LMP are prepared clearly to abuse the meeting's local law procedures to try and stop me from speaking, as councillor Murphy just did. It is very clear under the new rules what has to happen, and that is if the Chair of Conduct has engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct, which she has done in this case by allowing an incompetent motion that takes punitive action against me, it has to be debated as unsuitable meeting conduct. That's what the rules say. Now, in this case, it's pretty straightforward. The LMP has abused its power here through councillor Landers to allow an incompetent motion to come forward to take punitive action against me when its motion did not comply with section twenty-one ten B of the meeting's local law. And councillor Landers had a responsibility to make sure that that motion was ruled out of order because it was not competently made.
Any further debate? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, thank you very much Deputy Chair. We'll support this, this motion of unsuitable meeting conduct in councillor Landers. Because what is really clear and been clearly articulated by councillor Johnston in moving this motion today is that councillor Landers did allow an incompetent motion to proceed to debate debate and vote. And her explanation just earlier before councillor Johnston moved this motion was that she had previously, over those previous four meetings that councillor Johnston described, had not been aware that there were three instances of councillor Johnston's unsuitable meeting conduct recorded in the minutes. Now, why don't I believe that? Can, can any of you over there follow along? Why you'd also wouldn't believe what councillor Landers said in that she wasn't aware that a Chair of Council noted councillor Johnston's unsuitable meeting conduct in the council minutes? I wonder who the Chair was on those three occasions? I'm just, I wonder, I can't quite figure that out. Can anyone help me? Who was it?
Councillor Landers.
It was councillor Landers. So, when councillor Landers says she was not aware that three orders had been made against councillor Johnston and her unsuitable meeting conduct had been noted in the minutes three times, she was not telling the truth. So, so we can only assume she knew that that was the case, that those orders had been made and that she failed in her duty as the Chair of Council to progress this matter in a timely fashion according to section twenty-one ten B. And I think therefore it's pretty, it's pretty clear that councillor, councillor Landers has engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct and that should be noted in the minutes and we'll be voting for that.
Any further debate? Councillor Wong?
Thanks councillor Wong, thanks Mr Chair. Look, I just have to speak to this. The idea that councillor Landers has engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct is ludicrous. The idea that councillor Landers is singularly responsible for the conduct of councillor Johnston and monitors her conduct to the level described by councillor Cassidy is ludicrous. That councillor Johnston would engage in behaviour that requires that many is actual, is actually unsuitable meeting conduct, which we, we as a council determined should be referred to an external body, which was the nature of the motion. I accept councillor Landers' statement today that when she was made aware of it, she brought it to us as required by the law. We then considered it within, within the scope of the City of Brisbane Act and we referred it to an external investigation as is an option provided within that act. I do not accept that the Chair behaved in an unsuitable manner. I think that in the circumstances with which she exists, I think she did a perfectly, a perfectly good and responsible thing in the circumstances. I think that councillor Landers, considering the gratuitous and constant attacks on her by councillor Johnston, has behaved remarkably well and I think the consideration that the proposal that she has behaved poorly is wrong. I wholly reject it. I expect most councillors here wholly reject it and will be supporting the proposition that the motion we considered last week is within the confines of the City of Brisbane Act, that it is appropriate to consider these referrals in this manner within the law. Now, saying that, I would also call on the state government to change the law so that it can be done privately as it was done in the past before the Miles government changed it, requiring it to be public. When I was Chair of Council and such referrals were required to be made by me, it was done privately. The Labour, the former Labour government changed it to make it public. I do not know why. I do not know why the law was changed to require a councillor to be presented to the other councillors in this manner. I don't agree with it. I think that matter, this matter should have been a private matter. That being said, the law does not allow that. It must be considered publicly. It was put to this meeting, we referred it to a third party investigation, that is what's happening. I accept the circumstances presented by councillor Landers. I accept the course of actions council has considered. I accept that it is within the expectations and confines of the City of Brisbane Act and as a result, I'd move that this motion now be put.
Aye.
I'd like a second. Thank you.
Seconded.
Now, yep, a procedural motion is being moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Murphy. The motion to be put. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
The ayes have it. Councillor Johnson, your right of reply.
Division.
Well, too late and there's no second now.
Well, I didn't hear you. Did you actually declare the outcome of the motion, Mr Deputy Chairman?
Yes, ayes got it. Right of reply.
Okay, well I certainly didn't hear you say that, but anyway. Perhaps that's just an issue with the delay on the, on the online meeting. Look, it's not a surprise to me that councillor Wong has got up. He has done this to me before. It's not the first time that this has happened. And I will not sit back and allow the LMP to abuse their power under the meeting's local law. The issue before us today is the motion councillor Landers moved last week does not meet the requirements of the meeting's local law. She absolutely, councillor Landers is absolutely aware of what is happening in the chamber and the three occasions on which she has undertaken those inappropriate notice motions about me in the minutes. The reason I raised the one I did this morning is both last week councillor Collier used the word lies and again today councillor Murphy used the word lies. One of the three issues for which I was noted in the minutes for inappropriate conduct was for using the word lies. Now, I was not allowed to, or given the opportunity to withdraw. I was simply noted in the minutes. And at that stage, we had been told specifically that we could use the word lies. We just could not call another councillor a liar. And it wasn't until after I raised this again with the Chair of Council that she had to issue a clarifying statement. So it's very clear to me that the Chair of Council, councillor Sandy Landers, in carrying out her responsibilities under the meeting's local law treats me differently to other councillors. And that was the case as completely clear as it was today with councillor Murphy and as it was with councillor Collier last week. Another one of those motions, minute recordings, I was ejected for interjecting with no warning. No warnings, no cautions, no general councillors, nothing like this. I was simply noted in the minutes as the first time when I interjected. Now, that hasn't happened to any other councillor in the chamber either. So it is very clear that councillor Landers not only has engaged in a breach of the meeting's local law in taking this action against me last week, but has been breaching the meeting's local law by treating me differently to other councillors over a significant period of time. But it just shows me today that the LMP are prepared to defend obvious breaches of the meeting's local law on party political grounds. Now, the Chair of Council under both the City of Brisbane Act and the meeting's local law must uphold those laws and obey them herself. She has failed to do that by allowing an incompetent motion to proceed. Councillor Landers did that in fact by using general language to avoid, to avoid it looking like she was breaching the meeting's local law. But once you read the meeting's local law, it is very clear about what the preconditions are for this referral. And councillor Landers knew that. She put in language that was inappropriate. And when councillor Wong says it wasn't just councillor Landers, she emailed me and said aye, 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 all the way through it. So I can only presume that it was councillor Landers unless she's a puppet being controlled by somebody else in the LMP. Like councillor Quirk did to councillor Adams when she was the Chair of Council and he used to text message her. Perhaps that's what's going on there now with councillor Landers. But her written statements to me indicate that it was her decision to do this, that she was moving this motion, and she must comply with the meeting's local law. She is not exempt from it. So where the Chair of Council deliberately allows the law to be breached to take punitive action against another councillor that is not supported in the meeting's local law, that is absolutely unsuitable meeting conduct. It doesn't uphold the law as you are required to do. It is disrespectful. It is discourteous. It is unfair. It breaches every single standard in the councillor code of conduct. And councillor Landers needs to take responsibility for her actions which are to chair the meetings fairly and in accordance with the meeting's local law. And she failed to do that last week. And today, when I gave her an opportunity to provide an explanation, she waffled and avoided it.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Now I put the motion. Point of order.
Thank you. Just before we vote, I just would seek your clarification on two important things, Chair. Councillor Wong said that an independent investigator has already been appointed. Could you clarify if that's the case? Because that would be illegal if that is the case. And secondly, we've been told the Chair was alerted by somebody. I think this is an important aspect. Could you tell us who alerted the Chair as to, as to when, when this was noticed in the council minutes?
Look, I'm not aware of the councillor Wong's claim.
I suppose if you're calling upon me, Mr Chair, I would say that what I said is that the law requires us to refer to it, refer it to a third party, which is what we did. I did, I did not say that a third party investigator has been selected. All I said is that we are required under the Act to, we have a choice to deal with ourselves or refer it externally and we chose to refer it externally. I would expect though, that being said, that the decision of this council to refer it to a third party investigator would lead to an investigator being appointed at some point in line with the determination of this council.
Yeah, okay. Look, it's not my, it's not the Chair's role to explain, you know, to give you advice. But I believe councillor Wong has made it very clear. So now I'll go to the vote. All those in favour of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division?
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Councillor Johnson, can you advise how you are voting?
I will be voting yes on this one.
Thank you. Yep, clerks, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and sixteen against.
The motion is law. Can someone advise councillor Landers to return to the chamber? Thank you. Councillor will continue with general business. Any matter of general business? Councillor Dixon? Yep, sorry. Okay, sure. Oh, sorry, we have to, the procedure is to let councillor Landers know. Oh, sorry. Oh. So we'll come back, Chair. Madam Chair, there's no unsuitable meeting conduct, so please return to your chair.
General business, any speakers? Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I wish to rise on two items of business today. Obviously my obvious family update and my local Australia Day citizenship ceremony. So firstly, I just want to thank everyone for their well wishes, both here in the chamber and the Hamilton ward regarding the birth of my baby Sophie who arrived just after New Year. Thankfully, she wasn't in a rush for Christmas presents or to celebrate New Year and arrived on the second of January. So big brother James and dad Matthew have been a big help and very excited to have a new member of the family. So she's a bit young to get on the phones just yet, but I have high hopes she will be door knocking and letterbox, letterbox dropping in no time. After all, politics is a family business in our household and I think she enjoyed her first meeting today in the chamber after tuning in online for the last two weeks. There was a bit of discontent in the house this morning as James kept saying he wanted to go to mummy's work like baby Soph. But I'm sure all was forgotten when dad dropped him off at daycare. In all seriousness, it's always daunting adding another baby to your family, but I want to thank the Lord Mayor, Deputy Mayor and my team for being very supportive and there's been no shortage of hands to help today. And also thanks to those across the chamber as well for checking in on me too. I'm excited for the city hall baby. I'm excited for the City Hall baby boom to continue with both councillor Collier and councillor Atwood in a few months. I was a bit nervous about how I would juggle this job with another child, but I have to say, all those nerves fell away when I got a message from a local the other day saying, thank you for being a leader that shows the world that we can be mothers and work too. And I thought that was very lovely. And what an excellent message we're sending all women, young and older, in this place, especially as we approach Queensland Women's Week in the first week of March. Now, enough about me and Sophie. Now, on to my local Australia Day citizenship ceremony that I co-host with the Rotary Club of Hamilton. It was a success yet again. There were over thirty-five families receiving citizenship. And it was expertly organised by Gary Fenner, who is clocking up over fifteen years of being the coordinator for this annual event. It was my absolute delight that Gary was recognised this year in the Lord Mayor's Australia Day Awards for his commitment to these ceremonies. As the preparations always start in September and every year Gary foregoes his public holiday to make this day very special for the new citizens. I want to put on my record my thanks to Gary, Stephen, who was an excellent master of ceremonies on the day, and also the Rotary members who gave up their time to do the morning tea. While I love all aspects of the citizenship ceremony, I really enjoy it when the representative family speaks. And this year, a gentleman from the UK got up to speak about how excited he was to become an Australian citizen, telling a story about how it'd been a dream since he was a child, sharing with us that he'd inscribed Australia on his bedroom door as a young man to keep reminding him of the dream to get to Australia. So that's just beautiful. And I can't wait to be the officiating officer next year in 2026. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. And Sophie's behaviour has been exemplary today in the chamber. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about flooding in my ward. Last week, on February 13, we had a quick storm in my area, which dumped about thirty mils of rain. This is what you'd describe as a good storm, but not extraordinary. What shocked me, though, was the amount of flooding that occurred for hours after this rainfall. The high tide for that day was about three hours after the rainfall. So obviously, that did have some effect. But the level of flooding took me and many people by surprise. Contrary to what the Lord Mayor believes as well, we're not below sea level. I know we are quite low-lying in that area. But, so I was a little surprised by his comments. But I have been really shocked by the lack of maintenance lately, with gutters and drains completely covered in leaves and debris, with requests for maintenance of drains and gully traps left for weeks and in some cases for months before they are cleaned. I don't for one second blame our hard-working staff. I know that when there aren't enough of them out in the field anymore with LMP staff cuts, things are very hard to get to. And that's the feedback I'm getting from them as well. I've also been amazed at the admission now from council that the drainage system with pipes in so many areas are undersized and can't cope with the ordinary rain events that we have now. These projects are often, as I've said earlier, listed for funding. But alas, like most suburban drainage projects, are never funded by the Lord Mayor. I received the following feedback from that small storm last week. And I think it is important for the Lord Mayor and LMP councillors to hear this experience of local residents. And I'll read some of their comments out now of where it flooded and some of the issues on that day. Corner of Fourth Avenue and Flinders as usual. If drainage worked as designed, this would not be an issue. Disappointing to see consistent lack of appetite for fixing fundamental issues. Another one, Kennedy Street. The four drains around twenty-four, twenty-six and twenty-one Kennedy Street. The two drains on the west side of the road have twenty-millimetre inlets. Council standard is now thirty-seven point five millimetres. These two drains do not have the capacity to take water from a storm, so become a bottleneck and blocked. No water can enter these two drains. All stormwater then tries to get down the drain on the east side of the street, which quickly becomes blocked. The water in the road then breaches and enters properties and inside homes. A reply to that comment said, yes. And these then flood through to properties into the back of those houses on Brighton Terrace in bad storms. Corner of Perkin Street and Sixth Avenue. Another one, the drain creek inlet between the St. George Golf Club and neighbouring properties. The floodgates get blocked with debris. Added stormwater and high tides cause flooding. The Bournwood Street grass spoon drain, there's a problem there. The drain along Kemster Street flooded. Rainbow Street gutters were a foot deep near the Wired Owl Coffee Shop. The manhole on Upper Palm Avenue popped out too from the current. Another one, Rainbow Street, at a Curly Park entrance down to Palm Avenue. Drains were full of leaves and water couldn't get away. Signal Row had a torrent of water coming down the hill outside the Shawntle State School, outside School Hours Care. And the kids had to wade through water to get to the Oshk. Scott Street always has drainage issues. You have to try and jump over a metre-length puddle to get from the road to the footpath, always. Barclay Street, between Fenton and Scott Street, both sides of the road were completely under. The water gushing down again Signal Row outside Shawntle State School was very dangerous. Another one on Perkin Street, this time the intersection of Seventh Avenue. Fifteen Ivor Street and Bracken Ridge. This person rang the Brisbane City Council for years. They say the guttering is broken and the road is now starting to lift. And that's been neglected for years. Gutters around Stanley Park have been full of leaves since before Christmas. This person's previously called Brisbane City Council and been advised that the gutters will be swept on a nine-week cycle. It has been longer than nine weeks since the gutters have been swept. And nine weeks is too infrequent for gutters around parks with lots of trees. We agree. Now, this is just a smattering of the issues my community is facing from one single morning of rain because of a lack of maintenance and investment in drainage that is now impacting people when we have very normal rain events for a city like Brisbane. We deserve so much better out in the suburbs of Brisbane than this Lord Mayor is giving us.
Further speakers, councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on the issue of copper theft and how it's impacting our council assets. So late last year, during some routine maintenance, council officers discovered the electrical box at Bradbury Park in Kedron had been broken into. The lock was jimmyed open, wires had been cut and a substantial number of cables had been stolen. As a result, the path lights, the toilet lights, the car park lights and the barbecues have stopped working. This award-winning park, a favourite destination for families from across Brisbane, has been plunged into darkness, all for scrap. Even more concerning is that if it weren't for the keen eye of our council officers who spotted this theft, the exposed wires might have posed a real safety concern for the general public. Unfortunately, this issue is not exclusive to Marchant Ward and nor is it a new problem. Indeed, in the last twelve months, council alone has experienced seven incidents that we know of of copper theft that have impacted our assets. The Deegan Bike Way underpass, Bill Brown's sports reserve at Fitzgibbon, Eucalypt Tree Park in Bracken Ridge, which you know well, Madam Chair, Lemke Road and Depot Road, Tumble Bike Way, Macaranga Crescent Park and now Bradbury. Bikeways, sporting facilities and parks have all found themselves in the crosshairs of brazen thieves looking to make a quick buck and who's paying for it? The families, the commuters and the residents of Brisbane, who don't get to fire up the barbecue on the weekend at their local park, don't get to ride home safely from work or don't get to kick a footie after hours. The ratepayers are the ones left to pay for the damage. It's estimated that since copper theft has ramped up in recent years, the cost to council is around the $1 million mark. A million dollars, imagine what you could do for that. To break it down, it costs about $84,000 to replace one kilometre of stolen copper wiring and up to $2,500 per light pole. It's not just Brisbane City Council impacted by this either. Private construction, transport and main roads, telecommunications companies and other utilities. It turns out where there's copper, there's crims. It's not all doom and gloom, however. And in a true example of the ingenuity and resourcefulness of council's own aluminium cable revolution team, we're getting ahead of the thieves, one project at a time. For those perhaps unfamiliar with this, with what this is all about, since 2023, we have been replacing copper cables with aluminium cabling where possible. This is because aluminium has a lower scrap value, which means less cash for loot. Since February last year, we've also started placing signs at sites saying there are no copper cables in order to deter thieves from even trying. There are now 241 signs on pit lids across the city in parks and places where aluminium cables are installed. The only downside is that the replacement of copper with aluminium is complex and requires a lot of design work. So in some instances, it may not even be technically possible to replace it. So the copper theft may continue. South Australia recently announced it would look to introduce legislation to make it harder for criminals to sell stolen scrap metal. Some of these reforms include requiring proof of ID and accurate records for all scrap metal transactions and prohibiting cash or the use of cryptocurrency to buy or sell scrap metal. I know from my previous life that copper cable theft is a national issue and no jurisdiction or industry is immune. And I for one would welcome strengthened laws to help reduce this copper and scrap metal theft. And I know that councillor Hutton will be writing to the relevant minister about this issue to see what can be done. But in the meantime, I'm very pleased to report that we've now completed the design work on Bradbury Park's new aluminium cabling and works have started to replace the cables. In fact, during this meeting earlier today, I had a call from a local resident who saw the workers and is very excited about what's happening. I took the kids there myself on the weekend for a play and I had a squeeze inside the pit and I could see what they'd done. They'd just cut, they'd cut the, it was a straight-up smash and grab. They cut the cables, took them out. It's unbelievable. So weather permitting, we expect the cables to be laid by the end of next week. And I know that the community is very eager to see those lights switched back on and the barbecues fired up for our incredible, for this, in this incredible lifestyle destination to be returned to its former glory. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Strong.
Thank you, Chair. It's gone past six. Are we continuing the GB or are we going to dinner?
Do you want to do general business? Please go ahead, councillor Strong.
So the dinner break doesn't really matter anymore when it happens. Interesting, interesting. Another one of those rules that evaporates. Okay. I want to, I rise to speak on two, three elements of general business. One is procedural and the other is on education. Procedural one, of course, the three-hour guillotine has happened again, where only two chairs were able to give their reports. And honestly, whoever came up with a three-hour rule should rethink it and maybe reapply to the state government for an extension or something or whatever has to happen. Because clearly, what's the point of having chairs, right? Give public reports, right? If they're not able to do it? It's just, you know, it's just ridiculous. It's, it's, whoever changed the rule, whoever came up with this three-hour rule didn't think of the consequences of what could happen when it comes to chairs' reports. And really sad, really sad to see it. And there's a lot of petitions that don't get debated either. And speaking of petitions, I know there's like twenty-seven outstanding in the Infrastructure Committee. We were told by the Chair the other day. And I just wonder how many more are out there that have not been? And one of, one of our infrastructure ones goes back to 2023. You know, honestly, you've got to run it better than this. You've got to run it better than this. Okay, education. Good news. There was a suburban university study hub announced recently in my ward. There were only five of these announced by the Albanese Government right across Australia. And there is one now which will be opening up soon in Anala, which is a real coup for Anala, I'll tell you right now. I sat down with the, with the team some months ago who were exploring the idea of being able to do a hub in the area, but they were looking for premises, right? And these premises, I think, were going to be leased for a couple of years or whatever, right? Whatever they, you know. And it's really hard to find space big enough, right? To house a hub. Because these hubs are really a resource for students who don't want to go off to the university to access those facilities for study, right? They can do it close to where they live, which is a terrific idea. I know that, of course, the local federal member and the local state member, we're very much in favour of it. I know it's important that this, this type of study hub is available to students right across the country, not just in Anala. It's going to be in the old Commonwealth Building, where I used to work, where I cut my teeth, working for Henry Paliché up on the first floor. There's plenty of space up there. And it's, I'm really looking forward for that to happen in the near future. Another, and then following on from that, of course, I think we've all been to those leadership assemblies for our schools at the beginning of every year. You know, I think we're all probably quite impressed with those new leaders coming in and their first speeches. In a lot of instances, their first speech is at that assembly. And I'll tell you what, the quality is just getting better and better and better. I want to, I want to do a little bit of a shout-out, of course, to Glenalla High School. Their new captains that are coming in. One of them specifically was just outstanding. Honestly, he could stand up in this chamber and we'd all listen to him, I'll tell you right now. He's that good. And he's year 12 and he's just starting out in this leadership role for the school. Quite amazing. They have also at Glenalla a GEMs academic programme that was started by Corinne McMillan when she was the principal some years ago. And it's awards for academic excellence. And I was able to give out some of those certificates to the bronze. Then we got silver and then we got gold. And honestly, year eights coming in, honestly, the certificates were that thick. I stood there and I just shook hand after hand after hand congratulated them. This cohort, year eights, are going to be spectacular by the time they get to year 12, especially with ATAR, I'll tell you right now. And they're kicking a lot of goals with ATAR right now. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Wolf.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I rise to speak of a fantastic event that we held last Saturday in the Walter Tail Award, the Big Love Bands in the Park event. Now, as you would all know, last week was Valentine's Day. So we took the opportunity to celebrate Big Love. And the reason that we chose this date is the Walter Tailer Bridge actually was celebrating its 89th birthday and it officially opened on Valentine's Day. So what we planned to do was experience the event this year in preparation for what will be the 90th celebration for the Walter Tailer Bridge next year. So we had some amazing entertainment. The South Brisbane Federal Band, which is a 25-piece band, did a great job of all love songs. There were some hits there from Grease. And the event was in the Whitten Barracks Playground Park, which is right next door to the Walter Tailer Bridge. I also want to thank Sunrise Markets, David and all his team for all his hard work with the food trucks and the stalls that were put in. Everybody thoroughly enjoyed the food and the entertainment. In particular, Fizz the Fairy, who was dressed up as a love cupid and sharing her love potion everywhere. Face painting was also enjoyed by Happy Face Painting. I'd also like to thank my team in my office, Kylie and Melissa and all of my volunteers, including my family, who were there at the event to support Big Love. It was absolutely fantastic and we look forward to celebrating again next year. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to talk about two points. One, West End, Overland Flooding Small Streets meeting that we had. And also, secondly, the Hampstead Road Workshop. About two weekends ago, we had a meeting with many residents representing Granville, Princessa, Corbett, Baines and other streets across West End that suffered severe flooding late last year. These residents, I thank those residents to coming to this meeting. This meeting was called and asked of me by these residents because of their frustration with council and the lack of work to help them in relation to the stormwater drains related. We know that Princessa flash floods nearly every time it rains now. But the effects of this overland flood was pretty incredible with residents still not being able to return to their properties. I really thank the residents for a wonderful, wonderful workshop and meeting, looking at potential solutions, trying to find information. We'll be working together much further into the future. I want to thank Karupa, resilient Karupa, for their work in flooding not only in apartments but also for houses. And it's just something important to highlight. You know, there were residents at this meeting that had lived in their houses for over thirty years that flooded for the first time. There were residents at this meeting that literally said, every time it rains a little bit, there is flash flooding in this area. And what's really concerning is there are no plans currently for this council to help these residents. The stormwater drains are obviously not coping in this area. It affects a great amount of people. Their challenges are numerous. Their challenges are numerous. And so it's really unfortunate that this council has been slow on West End and the drainage, stormwater draining upgrades that are needed to ensure that residents, ratepayers, don't lose anything. And I'm talking about ratepayers and renters also. Secondly, I'd like to thank everyone that attended our second Hampstead Road workshop. In February last year, I held, was it last year? Yeah, maybe, maybe before, a workshop for Hampstead Road for a greening project. This project actually began when a combination of Karupa Transitions, West End WECA, West End Community Association and Karupa Futures came together in 2014 to do major consultation, consultation across Karupa to release a greening strategy for the Karupa, for the Karupa Peninsula. This was, of course, after the changes to zoning from the South Riverside Neighbourhood Plan that happened in 2012 to 2014. This greening strategy has kind of sat there. There's various items related to it that are trying to make sure that this urban area that is taking on a lot of density is able to have the green space, boulevards, verge gardens and plantings. From that first workshop, we did a lot of consultation. And from that came a project which I was able to provide funding to from my Suburban Enhancement Fund to make concept designs. Hampstead Road is a very, very wide road. It's very steep. It goes to a beautiful park in Highgate Hill, which is Highgate Hill Park, a heritage-listed park. And many people that not only lived on the streets, the streets surrounding, small businesses and people that use that street to transit from South Brisbane to Highgate Hill or to Annalene beyond, Dutton Park beyond, came to that meeting. I was really pleased to have been able to present two of the concept designs to this group of about fifty people that attended this community workshop. We'll be working towards this greening project because it's an important connector between Vulture Street and Dornoch Terrace. So thanks to the community for their participate, participation in our community workshops and I look forward to working more with you all. Thank you.
Further speakers? No, there's nobody on there. Councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I rise to congratulate young Ari. I've known Ari since we did some community consultations seven years ago regarding some playgrounds in Kings Park. And at the time, Ari was an impressive young man who articulated what he did like to see in a community park. And I've watched Ari grow up over the past seven years. And, you know, you get those residents in our wards that you just really like and you just, you like hanging with them, you know? And Ari is one of those guys, you know? I really enjoy hanging with Ari. But recently, Ari has received an apprenticeship as an electrician. And one thing that I do know is that when you become a tradesperson, your, your master, which is what most apprentices have, bestows the skills that you need for the rest of your life within your trade. And being, I believe, the only tradesman here in the chamber left after councillor Birken, councillor Windham retired, it's, it's something that I do tell a lot of young people that, you know, if you want to get ahead in life, get a trade. You can be earning in grade eleven before you even hit school these days. And these, these trades, especially electrician, carpenter, bricklayers, cementers, concreters, they're needed today. And I have to admit that I am immensely proud of Ari. I've been keeping up with his dad and the journey that he's taken to get his apprenticeship. It's been one that he's had some setbacks, but ultimately he has succeeded. He's got a job with a family-owned business and I know I grew up in my trade in a family-owned business and you don't just become an employee, you become one of the family. And I think for Ari, this is going to be a great experience for him. The only piece of advice that I can give Ari left before he actually steps on site is, "Mate, get a haircut. You don't want to go onto site with a hairnet, I'm telling you right now." But congratulations, Ari, on a job well done and I wish you all the success in your apprenticeship. Thank you.
Any further speakers? No, councillor Massey, nobody is on the screen, which we need to have.
Point of order, sorry, just for clarification, someone has to be in the screen, even if their hand's up. I'm asking the question.
That's right. No further speakers? I now call the meeting closed.